Yep.
Mark, Mark is sideways. Uh, it's right here. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So hit that and then minimize.
Um, well, hang on, let's go back. Let's have this loaded, let's have this open, it was this one?
Uh, no.
This one. And I have it open because then I think it'll be easier. Once we're in here and we hit share, you see it right there. Cool? Okay. I'll be here for you.
If people could find their seats so we can call this meeting to order.
Mark Kraft, can you hear okay?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, we will call to order this meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is on the back wall. If we could please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, we will, uh, begin our meetings with the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yep.
Commissioner Kraft is present virtually but cannot be a voting member. Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair.
Present, thank you. Let, let me, I, I should have said this as an introduction before we started even our first meeting, but we, uh, as a county board are beginning to have a separate Monday morning meeting now to allow for more, uh, discussion, more time on CARES Act things. This is a committee of the whole, it is all seven commissioners that are on the committee. These are open public meetings. Uh, unfortunately, they're up in nine because the chamber was not available because of jury selection and therefore I am encouraging people to participate by Zoom. We will not be taking any action as a group beyond perhaps making a recommendation to the county board. And, and so having a quorum present just for discussion purposes is not, uh, all that imperative, I think. We will have the discussion regardless. So I just wanted to mention that at least for the next three weeks, uh, we will be having nine o'clock Monday morning, uh, CARES Act meetings up in 9:03. Okay, uh, back to the Board of Equalization. Item A, approval of the minutes from July fourteenth and item B is August, setting up August fourth as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections. We have a motion on the second from Commissioners Boyle and Rogers on A and B. Are there any questions? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments, would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on anything not on the agenda? This is the opportunity to do so. If not, seeing none, we will move on to Resolutions D through H. Okay? Commissioner Boyle?
Couple of these nonprofits, I want to be sure that, uh, we're doing the right thing. For example, on page three, uh, almost three quarters of the way down is the Omaha Zoo Foundation and it says not applying for permissive exemption and I guess all of this is on, uh, CDs or something? Um, or the, maybe the website, I don't know what it's on, but can anybody? Mr. Goodwilly, do you know if they, uh, are, if that's correct or is that something they should be doing?
Uh, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. Uh, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, this item in resolution, give me a second, let me get in front of me.
It was D.
D. Right. It's, it's kind of the flotsam and jetsam that we're trying to resolve before we certify values in August. And so what we have are a lot of properties here that he, were either exempt at one time and, and the exempt entity sold it or they're entities where the, the nonprofit owns it, but they've not applied for an exemption because they're not using the, the property for an exempt purpose. In this case with the Zoo Foundation, it's just a little sliver lot, you know, that kind of, it, it joins the zoo complex and they're really not doing anything with it, so they didn't bother to apply for,
Okay, that's great.
For exemption.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, most of these, by the way, are land bank sales.
Okay.
Uh, where the land bank gets hold of property, uh, the land bank, uh, anything they acquire is exempt. Uh, they then pass a resolution to get rid of all the back taxes and then they sell the properties to somebody.
Great, thank you very much.
So by and large, yeah.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolutions D through H. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and now we have the legally required three-year plan of assessment from the assessor's office. Good morning again, Mr. Goodwilly.
Good morning again. Um, on the agenda, it talks about a presentation which I think is way too grandiose for what I intend to do today. The, the law requires assessment offices to provide a three-year plan of assessment at this time every year to their county boards of equalization. Even when I worked for the state, I thought that was kind of a fool's errand because the, the second and third year are hard to project out depending on what your local market is doing. And so what I've tried to do, what we've tried to do here is provide you a snapshot of where we are data-wise and what our tasks are likely to be going forward. And all I can really say to, to that end is everything's going to depend on the behavior of buyers and sellers out in the marketplace. You know, we try and analyze, uh, uh, selling prices against assessed value, um, as an idea of deciding where, uh, what neighborhoods need, need reappraisal and, and which ones don't. And essentially our job is to track the market and depending on what the market does, that's going to dictate most of our actions. We do have some constants that we have to do. We have to visit, uh, and inspect, uh, each parcel of real property in Douglas County at least once within a six-year window. So that's kind of an all-day sucker that's on and on and on and on. But the rest of it, the value piece, is really going to depend on what happens in the marketplace.
Thank you. Questions or comments from Mr. Goodwilly?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I've been thinking about it since I saw this on the agenda.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you, I wanted to ask if, um, uh, if there's ever a day when we can, uh, and this isn't a criticism of the office, but, uh, it's just a critic, I guess, a comment about, uh, some of the shocks that people get on their taxes and we're going to be hearing from some of them. Uh, Sarpy County has gotten into a path of, uh, two or three percent, uh, a year, something of that nature. I'm not that familiar, although I represented the employees down there. I don't, I didn't get into what the theme is. Can you talk, I'm sure you're familiar from your state experience with Sarpy County.
Well, you know, I don't want to really comment on, on their practices. My suspicion is that if, if their residential real estate market has looked anything like ours over the last five years.
Yeah.
The days of everybody getting a neat tidy little two percent bump are probably over there. I would suspect there are neighborhoods that have been as hot as some of ours where the, the changes are more radical. It's mostly, I think, a, a difference in, I don't know if philosophy is the right word, but we are judged on, on hitting a level of value between ninety-two and a hundred, our median level of value. And if you are within that range, you are equalized for, for state assessment purposes. And so I think the practice in our office has been if you're, you know, if you're in that ninety-three, ninety-four percent range, sticking next to two percent on somebody when you don't need to, um, seems a little bit, uh, like, like overkill. Um, and what I will tell you from, from my state experience has also been that the public seems to be really divided. We used to get, our office used to get all the letters that people would write to whomever the governor was at that time complaining about their property values and their property taxes. Um, and we were supposed to prepare a response. And what I can tell you is those letters were divided pretty evenly between those who complained because every year they got a small increase and those whose value rode for three and four and five years and then got one catch-up increase. So I don't know what the right answer is, Commissioner. What I will say is those people that get to keep the same value for years and years and years and years and then they catch up all at once, if you do the math on each of those years where they stayed the same and you impose some sort of small incremental increase until you get to where they are at the end where they're at market value, they actually have, they actually end up money ahead in that scenario. So there's no right way or wrong way to do it as long as you're hitting the, the targets of the state mandates.
Well, and I, and I appreciate all that. I, I think the difficulty is that, you know, we, uh, I've gotten calls about, uh, people who live, who've lived in a house for twenty-five, thirty years and their lot has gone up and they don't understand that and I don't either, how their lot can go from, you know, uh, eight thousand to twenty-eight thousand. And I don't, I, it's not going to be a teardown where they're going to build a McMansion on it. The other thing that concerns me is that, uh, right now the legislature, and you hear the governor saying it all the time, that property tax reduction is a big deal. Well, that's our only source of income. I mean, you know, and that's the same for the schools. And so we're sitting here as a, as a target. They don't collect property taxes, so let's, let's reduce, let's reduce the other guys. Well, you know, that's okay if they'll give us some of their sales tax and some of their, you know, their, uh, other taxes, income taxes. But, uh, and the difficulty is that it, it triggers legislation and we are a sitting target when we raise our,
Sure.
when the taxes go up by forty-eight percent or something. And, uh, then the other thing that's frightening is that it does chase people, possibly chase elderly people and other people for that matter, out of their homes and particularly in this economic situation. It's pretty scary.
The ones, I get, I get the fear. Now, we, we have a fairly robust homestead exemption program where we have, you know, anywhere from, you know, ninety-five hundred to ten thousand, five hundred recipients a year. And the one thing I really like about Nebraska's homestead exemption program is it provides much more meaningful relief, uh, than a lot of places. Uh, a lot of places have what they call a homestead exemption and what it means is the first ten or fifteen thousand bucks worth of value are exempt from tax and it goes to everybody that owns a residential property, whether you're the, the humblest widow on a fixed income or whether you're Warren Buffett or whether they're rental properties, it doesn't matter. In Nebraska, the property has to be owner occupied and the program is means tested a bit, but if you qualify, you can get up to the full value of your house exempt. So it's a much more meaningful program than in other places. But yeah, the, the fear is out there, I understand. The other thing I would mention is the people complaining about property taxes are not entirely wrong. And at one time, Nebraska funded its state and, and local governments like a three-legged stool, a third, a third and a third, property taxes, sales taxes, income taxes. Now, different recipients got different pieces, you know, the locals got the, the, the property taxes, for example, and the state did not. But I saw some piece of research not long ago that indicated that s- property taxes had moved up to somewhere around thirty-eight or even thirty-nine percent. And so the others had diminished. And so the sense you get is that we certainly are much more reliant on local property taxes to fund local government than we had been in the past when state aid to different things was, was, uh, more prevalent. And I know I've heard this board complain about, um, the plug being pulled on aid to things like criminal justice and juvenile justice and things of that nature. So that's not entirely wrong. But nobody in Lincoln seems to be interested in, in that number anymore.
Well, since the red light's going to come on in a second, I just want to get one other thing. I know that, you know, these homestead exemptions are meaningful and I appreciate what they do, help the elderly, but, you know, there are growing families with five and six kids and they have a home in the suburbs and it goes from what they paid for, you know, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, it goes up to two sixty and that sort of thing over time. And it's, um, it's just, we're going to get nailed on this property tax one of these days. They're going to, the legislature's going to pull the rug out from under us. And, uh, I, you know, I'm not, I, I don't say I blame them, but we're going to have a hell of a time funding, uh, our responsibilities. So, but I, I appreciate what you're saying. Thanks a lot, Mike.
You bet. Anything else, Commissioners?
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle, any other questions or comments? Okay, I am not aware of need for executive session for Board of Equalization. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, and we are adjourned from Board of Equalization. We will now convene as the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft is attending virtually but not a voting member. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair.
Present, thank you. I will mention that we are going to be having, uh, a presentation at some point this morning by the DHHS CEO for the state, Danette Smith, talking about expanded Medicaid and how it's going to impact our operations and our people. And whenever she's able to join us, we will, uh, I believe it's penciled in for ten-thirty. Whenever she's able to join us, we will go to that part of the, uh, agenda. Okay, uh, minutes and claims. Items A and B. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan to approve questions or comments. Could we please vote on A and B?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, this brings us to the consent agenda where we find items A through P.
Items, item C ten, because I have a, I need to stay.
All right. So C ten will be voted on separately. Was that a motion to approve consent, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Rogers, but it is less item C ten. Questions or comments to anything else in the consent agenda? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Um, on item E, uh, and I believe Mr. Myers is here, uh, just informationally, the American Correctional Association contract for re-accreditation of the main jail and the Criminal Justice Center. Director Myers.
Uh, good morning.
The Douglas County Corrections Center campus, um, is accredited on an annual basis, is that correct?
Uh, it, it's actually, excuse me, the auditors will visit us every three years. We submit documentation annually to support that we are still in compliance with their standards.
Okay. And the Criminal Justice Center, what's that facility?
Uh, that's our community corrections facility on Seventeenth and Jackson, adjacent to the jail. So this, this contract covers two separate audits, um, where the audit team will spend a full week here auditing both facilities.
And I presume that the audit was satisfactory for both facilities?
Um, our, well, the audit is still upcoming, um, but we have, um, passed all of our previous audits successfully.
Okay, so we enter into the contract and then they do the audit or am I getting?
Correct, that's correct, Commissioner.
Uh, so when will the audit occur?
The, the audit will occur in late October, early November. Some of these things are a little fluid with the, uh, pandemic, uh, as to how travel may or may not occur, when it will occur, um, those, those are some items that will be probably worked out in the weeks prior to the audit.
Great, um, I, and I appreciate that. You'll come back to us presumably with the findings of that audit.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you for that. I just have a couple of other quick informational questions. I don't know that there's anybody from the sheriff's office here on item G, which is a grant, uh, for the sheriff's office. Is there anyone here from the sheriffs? Okay. Item H, uh, this is a resolution authorizing an increase appropriation in the following general fund organizations. Capital improvement, money will be used to fund capital project at the Health Center and Corrections, nine million dollars. And Mr. Lorenz, um, if you could just give us an idea of what we're doing with that.
Joe Lorenz, County Finance Director. Yeah, this is just, um, a budgetary housekeeping thing where, uh, a few weeks ago we approved the capital spending, uh, for the Health Center and Corrections in the amount of close to seventeen, eighteen million dollars. And now what this is doing is until we approve the new budget, which should be new, uh, next month, we only have a total of fifteen million dollars of CARES Act authorization to spend. So what I did is I moved about half of the amount that they're going to spend on the capital project over to the capital improvement budget where, um, uh, public properties will manage those construction projects using that money. So it's really a budgetary housekeeping, it's not new news.
Would it be fair to say that we're talking about CARES dollars here?
It is all CARES Act dollars, yes.
So this is a subset of that?
Yes.
That, that we have already approved.
Yeah, so we're just moving that over into the capital improvement budget where Jerry Leahy and Jeff McGill can manage the construction projects.
Good, so, um, nine million out of the seventeen or eighteen, um, has the other, uh, portion of this, is it going to come before us at, at a subsequent time?
Yeah, it'll come once we approve, like I said, right now, we're, because we haven't approved this year's budget, we're still working off last year's budget, which has fifty million of CARES Act expenditures. The second budget has the, the whole remainder of the hundred and sixty-six. So when that budget's approved, then we'll move the rest over.
And finally, on K, resolution approving the purchase of Douglas County Liability Insurance. And this is, uh, Mr. Neely from the administration, I don't know if he's here with us today. Yes?
He's the guy in the mask.
Just real, Neely, Douglas County Administration.
Thanks for, uh, coming down. Just real quick, uh, we have a resolution approving, uh, liability insurance policies in the amount of one point one million dollars and, um, my understanding is for a portion of our liability, we self-insure, how is this different than that?
Well, we have different retention levels, which are self-insured, and we have self-insured workers' compensation. So this would be for coverages excess of those retentions or self-insured.
For workers' comp or for liability?
Well, for example, uh, workers' compensation, we're self, we're self-insured, approved by the state of Nebraska, which is a requirement. And for other lines of coverage, we have deductibles, just like you would at your home. So it would be liabilities excess of our obligations.
Okay, and who are these policies with?
I don't have the resolution in front of me, it would be stated on there. There's a variety of, uh, carriers.
Okay.
Uh, I can, Lexington is part of the program, Travelers, Alliant, Safety National, Genesis, States, Loews of London.
Okay. And are these annual, uh, contracts, policy contracts?
That's correct.
Okay, so you'll be back next year with this?
God willing.
Well, we hope so, stay well. Thank you, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
If I may comment?
Uh, Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, I just want to point out that on the consent agenda, item C, we have seventeen grant-funded, uh, programs to help prevent kids from getting into our juvenile justice system. And I think the public needs to know this, this all ties in with the new Juvenile Justice Center and how we are going to keep kids out of the system and reduce our head count as much as we can and hopefully prevent kids from getting in eventually as adult offenders. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion on the second, this is consent agenda, less item C ten. Uh, may we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Let's come back to item C ten, youth-initiated mentoring program for at-risk youth, a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We have a motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle to approve item C ten. Questions or comments? And I believe Commissioner Rogers will be abstaining.
Board.
Very good. All right, let me please vote.
Motion passes, five Commissioners voting yes, Commissioner Rogers abstaining.
Thank you. Recognition and proclamations, we are recognizing retiring county employee Linda Ortiz, retiring from the Douglas County Attorney Office after twenty-one years of service. I don't believe Linda was able to join us this morning. I have a nice little proclamation for her of what is the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers to approve item three A. If there are no questions or comments, could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments, this is the opportunity for anybody that wishes to address the county board on anything not on the agenda to do so. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. First of all, I've got some handouts for Dan to include in the comments. They're basically some things I've talked about in the past but need to be reemphasized today. And those topics being, first of all, take a knee. Last week I was here when we swore in at the city council and pledged allegiance to the flag and the mayor was going to speak. There are a number of the Black Lives Matters people, I guess they were, or young people, young Marxists, uh, Goslings, that didn't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Stayed in their chairs, maybe some of them took their knee. I would have expected this board to call them out of order at that point and ask them to leave the room. But not one person on this board, uh, city council did so. And I really don't expect that they would have here either. The next item, I mean, we are sworn to defend the Constitution and we, uh, part of that is honoring the Pledge of Allegiance, I believe. Next item is, uh, you know, we are kind of approaching a civil war, but people do not talk about it.
Talk, we don't need any of this brought up, if you, if you.
I don't know that the rules say I can't speak about it.
No, I, I, it says that I can't speak. So I'm just saying to you, I will not listen to talk of a civil war in the United States. We don't need that kind of rhetoric. If you want to say something else, civil disobedience, don't say civil war, that's way.
May I respectfully disagree for five minutes, well, less than five minutes?
I object to your line of, of talk because it is insightful to disobedience.
All right, invite me back next week as a presenter so that I can, because I'm giving you information that refutes what you're saying, Mike. When we have people come in here, speak against me and you, fist in the air, don't take a knee to the flag and they go out and destroy our property, that is a revolution, sir.
It is not.
And I'd like to be on a present, as a presenter, so we can talk about it. But I've asked before and been denied, okay? That's not American.
The floor is yours right now, Larry, okay? All right.
Sorry.
Hey, when anybody else? I like to speak during citizen comments.
Luis Humanaus, thirty-three oh six Burt Street, I did want to hear what Larry had to say. But anyway, um, good morning. Yesterday morning, the Health Department passed a resolution to require, uh, masks in public spaces and it's going to be in effect on August third. I was disappointed earlier, uh, in the month, I think when, uh, Commissioner Mike Boyle tried to get more masks for the public and he asked the administrator and the administrator was indignant, uh, towards Mr. Boyle because he was asking for masks beyond county employees. I hope that, moving forward, especially on August third, that the Board of Commissioners will do something about that, that there's access to masks in Omaha. I'm still looking at. I'm still looking at the information that was presented. I think the Dr. Poor is going to be working with the city attorney to draft the language. So it's going to be, it's going to take some time to draft the language for the directive, and that should give you guys ample time to secure masks for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Would anybody else like to address this board during citizen comments?
I have one other item, please, just one second.
You had two minutes left.
We don't talk about it here, but we do talk about it in the Reader Magazine. Some of your mugs are in here, as well as city council.
Title on that article is "Revolution."
All right, anybody else under citizen comments? If not, we will move along to the presentation, some CARES Act update, and turn things over to Joe Lorenz. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. Good morning. Joe Lorenz, County Finance Director, with this week's CARES Act update. First, as Commissioner Duda said, we are now having Monday morning meetings with the Board of Commissioners to review where we are on different issues concerning the CARES Act. We had our first one yesterday, which I think went pretty well, and we're going to continue to have them for about at least the next month, I believe. So that's there. We also are making progress on several fronts, on allocating and distributing the CARES Act money. Melissa's here, and she's going to give a RET assistance update. We're making progress with MUD and OPPD and Dollar Energy on utilities assistance. Teresa's going to give a little update on that later. We're also making progress on local government, both internal for the county departments, and also I sent a letter out week, out last week to the relevant units of local government within Douglas County, including Ralston Valley, Waterloo, Bennington, and Boystown, and we're also, in that category, going to include the Public Building Commission, dot com, and MECA. So we're going to set up that, those are local units of government that will be funded under, out of the one hundred and sixty-six million that Douglas County received in CARES Act money. So we're making progress on that front also, and the other thing we have today is we're going to have three presentations from different departments within the county who have some projects that they believe would qualify under the CARES Act in helping their operations deal with the pandemic. And so we're going to have corrections come and talk about the projects they have in mind. Then Brian Cruz is going to be here to talk about the way the pandemic has impacted the Election Commission. You know, there was actually a big article in the Sunday Paper about that in general across the country, that this is, the pandemic has had a significant impact on the operations and the cost of running elections. So Brian's going to talk about how the Douglas County Election Commission has been impacted, and then the sheriff is going to come, they were here last week, but they're going to come with further information on their project request. So that's kind of what we have on today's agenda for the CARES Act, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. If not, then we can go to the different groups who want to come in with their, with their project.
Commissioner Boyle.
Thanks, Joe. I'm curious whether there's
In the requests that are submitted, if there's any opportunities to, and I've glanced at a couple, I think maybe where they could be shifted into programs that would serve citizens directly, either through additional rental assistance or other programs that would help people directly, and I, I guess I'll probably bring those up as they come on. I do have, well, is the sheriff going to make a presentation today or?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. I'll wait for that then. I guess that's really what I had in mind, but there's a couple of things under corrections that maybe
Yeah, and Mike's can come up and give it. And the other thing I forgot to mention is we're starting to do our work on the non-for-profits, and we're starting, and that'll certainly come to you all for direction. And that's going to be another major piece of the CARES Act funding that we'll be working on and hopefully setting up and establishing in the near future.
And that includes the entertainment group?
Well, there's two groups. There's the Arts Council, I think they call themselves, and then there's also the smaller non-for-profits that are the community groups providing social services primarily in north and south Omaha.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks, Joe, and I think in our discussion yesterday, you know, we talked about where we are in terms of the spending, the one hundred and sixty-six million that Douglas County has been allocated. And just real quickly, so people have some kind of a benchmark on that, I think the numbers that we talked about yesterday were, that we're allocating so far about fifty-seven million for government-related activities in Douglas County. And there was additional twenty-five million, was it, for not-for-profits and different allocations? I want clarification from you, I'm sorry, because I'm just reading these notes.
You know, our initial allocation had ten million dollars for not-for-profits, but we talked about it yesterday, and as we consider the program and how encompassing it could be, that that ten million dollars could be expanded. And then, well, we haven't specifically voted on, you haven't specifically voted on it, in our reserve and that we're keeping, we've set aside twenty-five million dollars to, for the City of Omaha that when they file their submission and their, and it's verified that their costs meet the CARES Act guidelines that we would reimburse them for.
Okay, that's, that's right. I juxtapose those numbers. So it was fifty-seven million for the government, a lot of this is Douglas County government, ten million for the not-for-profits, and twenty-five for
Yes.
for the city. Okay, and so we were coming in somewhere in the low eighty million dollars.
At this point, yes.
Now, the ten million not-for-profit amount, and we're aware that the arts community is kind of coming to us with a, an ask, and I think the Omaha Community Foundation is going to be
Right.
possibly involved in some of that. Is that a portion of this ten million, or would that be an addition to this ten million in your mind?
I think that that would probably be an, that's up to you all, but in my mind, when we first talked about it, we were, I think, talking about social services for the community, so I would see this as an additional amount for nonprofits.
Okay, for the, for the arts and entertainment?
Yes, yes.
Great. And so, you know, of the one hundred and sixty-six million to date, we're at about eighty-two, eighty-three million.
About half of it, yeah.
About halfway done. And the deadline for distributing all these funds is?
December thirtieth.
Right. Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan.
Joe, just wanted to ask you, that eighty million, does that include the twenty-five million that was set aside for the City of Omaha?
Yes.
That does include that, and we're still waiting to get word, or the list from the city.
Yeah, we're
I know we have
We're waiting for their formal submission of, that will be reviewed by Deloitte, and then when that's approved by Deloitte, the amount that's approved will be funded fifty percent by the state and fifty percent by Douglas County.
Okay, and Ralston, I think you've received theirs.
We got a preliminary, we sent out some material, we have to get it, some additional backup, but yeah, that, that's in process, and we're, we're working with them.
They did submit it, then.
Yeah, we're, we're working with them, yes.
Okay, and I know Commissioner Boyle was working on some of this also, and we'll discuss that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
That's okay, I yield.
Okay, you had asked for the floor first.
Thank you, thanks. The twenty-five that you're talking about is specifically City of Omaha. The amount for the City of Ralston is separate from
Yes, yes.
That's not allocated.
No, that's in what we're calling local, other local government.
Okay, would that be then under the fifty-seven million dollar subset, or is it unallocated subset?
I think initially, when we considered other local governments, including dot com and the Building Commission, we had a range of eight to ten million, and that's kind of like the City of Omaha, where we reserved it, but we haven't specifically allocated, so I think that would be an addition, so.
They're going to come before us at some point. Isn't there a process that the state is requiring them to apply to FEMA or something before they qualify?
That applies to the City of Omaha, but not, because when we're funding it directly with Douglas County CARES Act money, we're not using FEMA as primary, we're using CARES Act as primary. So those units of local government within Douglas County, not counting the City of Omaha, will not have to do FEMA.
Sure, and this board has not taken any action on this fifty-fifty state-local split on the Douglas, on the Omaha portion. Is it, I, I don't recall voting on a resolution that
I'm going to defer to Commissioner Duda.
Correct, we have not voted on it.
So, I mean, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but I saw yesterday that the legislature has actually picked up the discussion on this, and so this morning, right now, I think they are talking about an amendment to the budget bill in the legislature that will possibly impact the state's portion of the CARES money, which, you know, arguably, we should be in for. We're twenty-eight and a half percent of the state's population, and with one hundred and sixty-six million out of one point two billion, we're only getting about fourteen percent of the CARES dollars. So we should have a serious discussion with the state about our fair share of CARES funding, because on a per capita basis, the taxpayers of Douglas County are getting far, far less than the taxpayers of, say, Cherry County. And that's a discussion that we should have, particularly when we're talking about fifty-fifty splits on the City of Omaha's portion. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and I guess
Excuse me, Commissioner Boyle.
Confession, the reason I yielded to Commissioner Kavanaugh is I was sitting here daydreaming, and I forgot my question, so now I remembered it, though. I just wanted to bring up something that is not that earth-shaking, except it's important, I think. I wanted, I was talking to the mayor about the, giving the money and so forth, and I, I did ask her if she would agree to hold harmless, and she said absolutely. So I would like to make sure, as foolhardy as it may be, I mean, if they don't have the money, they don't have the money, but we do need to have a, an agreement that they will repay us in the event the federal government says we gave them money that was not, would not be authorized. So I, I will ask Teresa to kind of follow up on that and make
Yeah, and we're doing that with all other, the units of local government, and also with the utility assistance, and yeah, so we're definitely
How about any other organization? Do we think we need to protect ourselves with, you know, the Arts Council or anybody else that might be getting money from us, just to make sure that that's okay?
Yeah, I think, you know
It wouldn't hurt.
It wouldn't. I think as we get into the nonprofits, we'll have that discussion, but it is certainly, I think, a relevant point for us, yes.
I just think we ought to have a hold harmless with everybody, and then, you know, I don't mean to talk about litigation, but if it happens, it happens, if that's the way it goes. So anyway, just to protect the taxpayers of Douglas County, that we don't get hit for something. Okay, that's what I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Joe.
All right, with that, I think we'll start our presentation, so I will ask Mike Myers to come up and take you all through his list of projects.
My apologies, commissioners, I'm not a Zoom expert, and Karen told me to share my presentation with the screen. Share screen. Okay, there we go. Okay, I think we're ready to roll. Good morning, commissioners. Mike Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Here to run through a pretty comprehensive list. As you know, the jail is a very vast and complicated operation, and so we have a pretty robust a pretty robust list of items and projects to help keep the citizens who are incarcerated in our facility safe, as well as our staff. I'm going to start by going through some definitions of our categories. Personal protective equipment refers to any item that's designed to reduce the risk of transmission of infection. Primarily, this includes wearable items such as masks, gloves, face shields, and gowns, but, but also includes certain equipment, such as thermal cameras for temperature monitoring. Sanitation supplies. This includes primarily disposable items such as disinfectant and sanitizing wipes. We also have a category of sanitation equipment. This includes durable items, such as Clean Core machines, I'm sorry, and I actually, we actually did take the floor scrubbers out of our request, my apologies, and other machines to aid in the sanitizing of the facilities. We also have a technology category. This includes IT solutions to, for the long-term operation of virtual court, reinstating our programming, our treatment programs and educational programs, our reentry services, doing more of our training of our staff in a virtual manner, and increasing our teleworking capabilities for those people who, if they have to quarantine, they can potentially still be able to contribute to our day-to-day functions from home. We have a category for staffing. This includes costs of additional staff and reassigned staff in order to maintain safe operations. And again, my apologies, I updated this presentation, and as you know, the last forty-eight hours have not been very conducive to, to my, to focusing on this. The food prep after Deloitte, review with Deloitte, that has been removed from our, from our ask. However, medical equipment and supplies remain. This includes increasing the onsite treatment and capabilities for the diagnosis and treatment of COVID patients and other conditions in the event that local hospital resources become overwhelmed by the pandemic, and we are forced to develop capabilities onsite to care for people that we don't currently have. Our renovations, and I want to give a big caveat here. Some of these projects, at this point on the calendar year, we may not be able to bring to fruition. So our ask today is the maximum we will ask. It may be less. We have worked very preliminarily with public properties, and some architects and some firms that do this sort of work knowing and acknowledging with them that these projects may not be possible to pull off in the timeframe. After your approval today, we will attempt to sprint forward with these projects to get, to get them started. We may, in a few weeks, determine that the scope of some of these projects is not feasible to do within the timeframe that the CARES Act allows, so these will not move forward. And again, you know, I'm sorry, commissioners, I want to look and make sure that this is the correct presentation, because I put a second one up here this morning, and my one from two weeks ago was still up, because I'm reading language in here. That's not, that I have, I know I removed. I was surprised when I saw the kitchen stuff on here before, previously, so I think when we shared the screen, we're sharing my presentation from two weeks ago. Give me just a moment. I want to make sure we have accurate. Later. Thank you. I'm unaware if this, if this has been, if my screen is currently being shared. All right. Well, I can see it. I don't know if I'm sharing it. There's a delay.
Okay.
Sorry, Karen.
I think you're Jason's computer.
Sorry.
This one?
It's that one.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Onto our specific asks according to those categories I reviewed with you. Technology. So as you're aware, we have stood up virtual court, both for county court, the jail, the courtroom 50, as well as we do court hearings on an individual basis for district court, federal court, juvenile court. And we also have, we facilitate the viewing of discovery materials with defense attorneys and their clients virtually, as well as even doing hearings for people who have charges in other counties, which is actually a nice process that I hope continues, because it increases the overall efficiency for people getting through the criminal justice system if they have charges in multiple places. So we have, our ask is to, we basically cobbled that together very quickly with existing equipment. There, it is, there are some upgrades that are needed, so we were asking to be able to be prepared to operate that on an ongoing basis. As I mentioned, the teleworking capabilities, I believe we identified approximately 50 people who could do some work from home if needed. So it's tablets for them. Backup and virtual command centers. So this is a, the ability to create a center to be able to operate the jail and command the jail from outside of the jail. Building, the fifth floor of the CJC has a room that we're, we've designated to be the backup command center, so that if there was such an extensive outbreak in the jail that we, it wasn't safe for us as leadership, as a leadership team to enter, we could still monitor all the activities, have access to all the cameras, and make sure that we're supporting the staff the best that we can from a remote location. And a training simulator. We've really been impacted on our ability to do some of those, that close contact, the very valuable simulation training, use of force, preventing use of force, de-escalation training. There are simulators that do a very good job of replicating that quite realistically. So we're looking for that. So our total ask for technology is $375,701.22. Our medical equipment. This is, there's an extensive list that you received as a backup document. Diagnostic equipment, equipment to treat individuals with COVID, a host of diagnostic and treatment tools, upgrading our technology as far as our X-ray equipment, dental equipment, and so forth. Again, this is twofold. It's one, to provide better care for individuals who are directly in, have a medical conditions caused by COVID, and also, in the event that we have to be more self-reliant because we can't, because of an outbreak or because of community resources being taxed, to develop capabilities to care for inmates in ways onsite that we currently would have to send people out for. Our total ask for medical equipment is just shy of $700,000. Our personal protective equipment, this is pretty familiar to everybody at this point. The, we do have several different locations where we're going to place thermal cameras, which will use facial recognition and be able to help us track staff who've, and keep the record over time of what their fever or their temperatures have been as they enter the facility. We have several different entry points between the two facilities, so there are multiple thermal cameras included in this ask as well. And our ask for personal protective equipment is, is just shy of $145,000. Our sanitation supplies. This is just basically disposable items that are, we're going to go through as we clean the jail. We're asking for another 100 and, nearly $114,000. This, then we have sanitation equipment. The bulk of this is the item highlighted there called the virus-killing robots. These are mobile devices. They actually kind of look like R2-D2, if you see one. I know there's a hospital in Lincoln that's using them to disinfect rooms, as well as decontaminate their PPE. We have a very large facility, two facilities actually adjacent to each other. So we have a ask of five of those robots to be able to cover the jail on a consistent basis, as well as the community corrections facility. So our total, they, they are not cheap, and that's the, the total ask for the sanitation equipment is $761,911.38. Again, this is the area that this may or may not, some of these projects may not come to fruition in the timeframe. The community corrections lobby, this involves creating some barriers for social distancing from the staff and the public who are coming through. The criminal justice center, fourth and fifth floors, this involves another common public area that we want to put some barriers in place, as well as renovations to the fifth floor to create that backup command center for the jail. The most expensive item on this list is the main lobby of the jail. This is, again, all about traffic flow and social dis, creating social distancing barriers. So that, again, that, that's a big project, and we hope to accomplish it, but we're not certain. And our admissions area in the jail, which is one of our more vulnerable places during this pandemic, are, the cases for our staff have been, by and large, individuals who work in admissions, and that's not surprising, given the, the, the role that they play for us and the amount of people who they come into contact with, even with all the precautions they're taking. This will be to create some barriers for social distancing and, and provide for some additional protections for both the staff and the individuals who are being booked in. Our two gymnasiums in the jail sometimes serve as housing units when the population is increasing. And especially with the ongoing renovations that will continue for some time, when we have housing units that are not available, we frequently need to use those, those gymnasiums as housing units. During the pandemic, we have not been able to, other than just maybe for an overnight here or there, because the gymnasiums do not have spaces for showers. So we then, when we do operate the gymnasiums as housing units, we have to move inmates out of their, out of the gyms in small groups and take them to other housing units to be able to shower. That creates cross-contamination. For the public's knowledge, we have about 29 separate housing units in the jail, that's not including these gyms. We're trying our very best to keep each one of those as separate and inside of its own bubble during this time as possible. So the gyms are really not an option for us, unless it's just a short-term overnight deal, because, because of the, the need to move people out to shower in other housing units, creating that cross-contamination. This will be critical if our population takes an unexpected rise that's sustained over time, that we have that, that we have that option. And our contact visiting, and I put now slash virtual court area, we're not doing contact visiting for our, for attorneys and psychologists and so forth. They're using our, what used to be our public visitation area, which is still closed circuit TV. But this is now where our virtual court happens, and people are down there for much longer periods of time than they were before. There's no restroom. So this, that, that renovation is adding a restroom to that area, so that we can better operate virtual court, because I don't think that function is going to go away anytime soon. Our total ask for renovations is $1,170,375.42. And our staffing costs. We have staffed a 24/7 COVID temperature check station since the end of March. We also have additional staff trained to work in our virus containment unit. Because of the full PPE that they wear, we do staff with additional staff so that they have an opportunity to safely get away, cool off, because it is very difficult work to maintain in those, in that housing unit for eight hours straight without being able to, to take a break. Our staff who are facilitating our virtual court, we've had to do a lot of additional training on PPE, and our staff who are working in the, in the containment unit, we've had COVID-related leave costs, which have contributed to increased overtime costs. All told, we're projecting by the end of the year to have a $1.1 million cost in staffing related to the pandemic. Our total ask, if you add all that up together today, is $4,365,453, or $450.43. Ready for your questions?
If, if I may.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. Mike?
Yeah.
In these items you have, do you see any long-term savings in labor or increase in long-term efficiencies?
Yes, Commissioner, I believe that the, the capabilities to do court virtually could have some beneficial unintended positive effects in terms of getting people seen more quickly by a judge in certain circumstances where they could be released sooner. I also think that some of the technology, the clean core machines, the, the virus-eradicating robots that we're looking at, those are all things that will speed the, the work of people doing the cleaning and sanitizing of the facility. And I think that the thermal scan, there, there's some interesting capabilities with those thermal thermometers, thermal camera thermometers, that in, there may be the potential that we may even not have, staff the station with a person, and that we may be able to get a notification that says, Officer so-and-so has a fever, before they ever get any further into the building and get that notification by somebody who's not even physically present as they walk past the camera. So those are things that may be able to result in some savings over time.
And it can also, with the sanitizing, decrease the amount of people who need to go to the infirmary.
Yes, absolutely. The more.
Thank you very.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Myers? Commissioner Boyle?
Mike, is there any, are there any changes to the air conditioning units for airflow? Did I miss that?
Absolutely, there, there are. That was included in some of public properties.
Okay.
Portion of this. We worked together and separately on our own projects for the corrections.
So air is circulated much differently than it has, is now? Or is that already in place?
That is not, the, the improvements that are related to CARES are not in place. We've recently been upgrading through the public safety bond our air handling units on the back portion of the jail anyway, but there's additional air handling units that they are going to be working on as part of this prod, our, our series of projects. And I, I might have screwed this up again, I'm sorry. I was trying to get out of the PowerPoint, and I'm not sure if I'm sharing anymore.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Director Myers?
Aye. Thank you.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is kind of on the subject, but off the subject of CARES Act, but it's to the facility as a whole. Now that we are experiencing more positive cases, both with staff and with our incarcerated individuals, can you put together what some of the things would be helpful for staff from the community that we can get out there? I don't want them to think that their work goes unnoticed.
Sure.
For what they're going through. There's been, like you said, the last 48 hours have been a bit complicated, but just the everyday now, going in and working and the special team and, so if you could just put a list together and.
I will.
Let us know, so we could put a request out to the community for items for our correctional officers, that would be great.
I'll do that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. All right, then, thank you, Mike. Good.
Thank you.
Good presentation. How do you want to proceed on this? Do, do we want to listen to all of them? I mean, we can take action today, if we so choose. Well. And that was at $4.365 million. Questions or comments?
Says a motion by Borgeson, second by Boyle.
I believe that, Mike, you were the second? Yes. The motion is to approve $4.365 million of CARES Act funding for the corrections department.
The exact amount, $4,365,450.43.
Thank you. I missed, missed that. Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to be sure, now, this, these items will be reviewed by Deloitte and our people legal, even though we're approving it, we're recommending that, subject to all the hoops to jump through before it's finalized, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely. Commissioner Borgeson?
Involved in the conversation with corrections on some of their requests already?
I believe so. I believe they did offer some guidance already. Okay, further questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Duda, I stopped the vote before you had a chance to vote. I assume you vote yes?
I did.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Great work.
He's got his hands full. I am pleased that we have such competent leadership and staff in place in such a difficult time.
Agreed.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just a, a quick.
Just a quick informational, Joe, you just give me a yes or no on this. Is this 4.3 out of that 57 million subsets that we talked about?
This is in addition.
In addition to that, okay.
Next, we have the election commissioners' funding request, and we welcome Brian Cruz. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Well, thank you for having me here this morning. I think most of you know my chief deputy, Chris Caruthers, but he's here with me this morning, and we work as a good, I guess bipartisan team, you might say, for the voters of Douglas County, and we're proud to serve them and do that. So I'd just like to start out by saying that I believe that the May election we had was one of the first elections in the country that actually took place after the COVID kind of started in March. Many states delayed their elections, but ours was one of the first, and here in Douglas County, I believe it's one of the smoothest that has been ran of all of them, too. And, you know, we intend to duplicate that for November, and that's why we are starting now. So I attribute the success of that May election to all of the staff at the Election Commission, both the permanent staff and our temporary staff that worked numerous hours. Also, the voters of Douglas County embraced the by-mail option. We did have neighborhood polling places, and so we thank our poll workers and our community partners in having those neighborhood polling places. We did not consolidate into three or four or five vote centers, you might say, like other cities or jurisdictions around the country did, jamming people in there and causing long lines and frustration. You know, we also work closely with the Nebraska Secretary of State's office. We have the support of this board, of course, which we appreciate very much. And finally, most importantly, you know, it does kind of go back to Nebraska nice, but the voters of Douglas County were very respectful and very patient with us and helped us make this election in May a big success, and we intend to do that in November again. My presentation this morning is pretty brief. I'll answer questions if you have them. I think you've seen it, or you'll have an opportunity to follow along. It does focus quite heavily on the by-mail election, but it is important to note that we will definitely have polling places, and at this point in time, we are planning to have in-person voting as well, which was suspended in May by the governor. But we're planning to have all three options at this time. But as we all know, things can change from day to day, so we'll have to be flexible, which we will be. So just a few statistics here from the primary election in May. Probably the biggest one is the fourth one down there. Nearly 87% of those that voted, voted by mail, and 13% were at the polling place. We had 139,000 total ballots issued, and out of that, we had 118,000 of those by-mail ballots returned. So we actually had a voter turnout in May of 38%, and normally, we have about 20% in a statewide primary. So we did have an uptick there. So looking forward to the November election, again, these are all proposed numbers. I'm kind of looking into the crystal ball here, and so we don't know what that crystal ball holds, but we'll know in November if I was right or really wrong. So we currently have 360,555 registered voters, so I'm thinking that by November election day, we'll have 365,000 registered voters with an average turnout of 70%. So what that means is we will issue, what I'm projecting, and this is the number we probably want to focus on, is I am projecting that we will issue 205,000 by-mail ballots. So that's why we need some equipment to help us manage that. Now, we know from historic numbers that not all of the ballots that we issue by mail get returned, but about 85, 86, 87% do. So I am projecting that we'll have 70% of the total voters in November vote by mail, which will be 178,850, and 30% at the polling place, which is 76,650. Now, that could change, you know, that could go 80/20, could go 75/25. We'll have a much better idea once we start getting into the by-mail request, and I'll have a much better idea of that in mid-September, probably. I am, the one ask that I am going to ask for this morning, besides the money, is we know there's a certain number of people that like to go to their polling places, and we respect that. And we will have about 200 polling places in the county, just like we did in May. My ask is this morning, if you are going to go to your polling place, would you please consider, would you be a poll worker for us so that other people like you can go to your polling place? We are working on poll workers right now, and we're confident we have enough, but it will take about 2,800 total election workers for November. 2,370 of those will be polling workers at the approximate 200 polling places. So again, if you're one that is insistent on going to your polling place, or you like to, please contact our office and be a poll worker. We would much appreciate that. The easiest way to do it is go to our website, vottdouglascounty.com. There's a blue line across the top. Go to the fifth one over, and the dropdown says new election worker. If you don't have the ability to do that, please call our office at 444-VOTE-8683. We are going to send out an early voting request application to all voters in Douglas County like we did in May. Those ironically will be dropped in the mail tomorrow, so voters can start to look for those probably Friday and Saturday. And again, their information will be pre-printed, so they simply sign it and return it, or if the information is correct, just correct it on there and return it. Drop boxes have historically only been open for ballots to be returned. We are going to open all of the drop boxes around the county tomorrow as well when we mail this out. So voters will be able to return these in any of the drop boxes around the county, or by placing a single forever stamp on there and returning those to us. We mail out ballots for the first time on September 28th. So we encourage voters to return these early. Get them into us early so we can process those, we can manage those a little bit better, and we can have an idea of what we're looking at facing the November election. One of the things that we're asking for, I'm asking for, is a new or an additional envelope to print ballots. We're unique in the fact that we're one of the first few jurisdictions around the country that print our own ballots in-house, and we print our own ballot envelopes. By doing that, ESNS has told us, since we've done that over the last 12, 15 years, they estimate we've saved the taxpayers over a million dollars by doing all of that in-house. We have one envelope printer currently, but again, for duplicity's sake, for backup's sake, and with the sheer number that we're having, the 205,000 ballots that we're predicting to send out, we have to have an envelope for each one of those. We just, we need that additional ballot printer. Drop boxes. These are what our current drop boxes look like. They have served our voters well. They are metal, they are deteriorating. Public properties, we've worked with them. You know, you can sandblast them, you can repaint them, but they have a three-to-five-year lifecycle with the weather that we have here in Nebraska. You can see the one that's right outside the county building here, most of them look like this, unfortunately. And you can see how they have the big slot, the big opening in there. So while we've not had many problems, the ability with these does exist to place other items in there, you know. Library books, we did have somebody put a bag of McDonald's food in there one time, but we've been very fortunate in that fact. So this is the new one that we have at our current office. You can see the slot up there where it says push here to open is much smaller, and it only allows for ballots to go in there. So it's much more secure, they're larger, they're stainless steel, so they have, you know, a much greater lifestyle. So we would like to replace the nine we have around the county and then add four more for voters' convenience. So on the map, the ones in red are the ones we currently have. And you can see, we basically have four going across the southern part of the county and four going across the northern part of the county. Then there's the one here at the city-county building. So our additional four proposed locations, and these are just general areas, I want to stress that, these are general areas. We haven't spoken to specific vendors or areas of that. But we were thinking one near the Med Center because it's midtown and there's such a large workforce there, then going out one near 72nd and Dodge, due space, crossroads somewhere in there, then going out to Village Point at 168th and Dodge or in that area. So that, again, with the one here at the city-county building, will take us across the middle of the county. And then one in Bennington. Our drop box at 156th and Maple at the engineer's office is by far the biggest one used, other than the one at our office, because of the growth up there. So we proposed one for up there. So again, these are general areas of the need. Now, we have talked to the company that would provide these for us. They are on about a three-to-four week processing timeout now, but we could have those by the end of August and then have those in place for the November election is our hope. And we've been working with public properties on this. Jerry and his folks have helped us or will help us on that, so we've been working with them on that. The last slide just goes through line by line of the different items that we're requesting. Again, I won't go through every one of them. Our total request is $472,026. We've talked to most of our major vendors, so we've tried to get these numbers as close as we can. There might be a little variance in here, but there's not, you know, going to be a ton. The one thing I will say, I've said it below before, but we really found out in May, I mean, it's truly a blessing, and we can't thank you enough that we got this new building, because without this, we would have never been able to conduct the May election or this election. Our workstations in there, our six-foot workstations, just by, I guess, somebody up above helping us do that. So we have proper social distancing, we have a huge work area, the lobby is, you know, differentiated from the public area. So we just are very thankful that we have this space, especially in these times to social distance, and quite frankly, to be able to do the volume that we've done with the warehouse down below and the other part upstairs. And, you know, we are underway right now, we're verifying petitions, so I think most of you have been out to the location, but you're more than welcome to come out anytime. We'd be happy to show you the space if you'd like to see it. Because of the number of petitions we have, we're working 7:30 in the morning till 9:00 at night, five days a week, and 8:30 to 5:00 Saturday and Sunday, so anytime you'd like to come visit us, we'll probably be there. But other than that, I'd just like to, again, thank the staff, both temporary and permanent. We could not have done it without all of them. Every one of them's a vital part. And again, the voters of Douglas County for embracing us and being patient, being willing to work with us. So as you're well aware, you just did, you took action on the one previous to me. I would ask that you take action on this today so that we can get some of these items ordered, so we can ensure that we have these items for the November election and things go smoothly, you know. So again, we can kind of be an example for those around the country. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for a very good report, Brian. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Brian, for the presentation, and also, again, for running such a smooth primary, and I know the same will be said for the general. Can you just press the importance for our citizens when you send the early ballot request application, that ours are green?
Yes, yes. So Douglas, Sarpy, and Lancaster, the big three counties, and other counties on their own around the state are sending early voting applications out. In Douglas County, we chose to do green because it's neutral, but also hopefully it stands out in your mailbox. And we try to make this as convenient as possible for the voters. So really, all you have to do is look at your information. If it's correct, sign it if you'd like to vote by mail and return it. If your information is incorrect, just correct it and return it. And again, you can return this by drop box, you can return this by US Postal Mail with forever stamp, you can take, and the instructions are on there, but you can actually take a picture with your smartphone, and you can email that to our office. You can fax it in, or you can bring it to our office and drop it off if you want. So it's very easy and very convenient to do this. And again, we respect everybody's right to vote how they choose, whether that's at a polling place or by mail. But again, if you choose to vote by mail, we don't know what the virus is going to do. You know, they're telling us there's a resurgence coming in the fall. It helps to keep everybody safe, helps to keep our poll workers safe and our voters safe. We have not heard, I don't believe there was any cases of COVID that were transmitted at our polling places in May, not that we have been made aware of, so that's a big victory. But we would like to continue that, obviously, into November for the health and safety of everybody.
And that was my other question in terms of the needs for the election office, is the gloves, the masks, the disinfectant, the...
Yes, and that's in there. Okay, we do have personal protective equipment in there. The state will be providing PPE for the poll workers. We will be providing PPE for the voters. So I'm working with vendors to get masks for people coming in person to vote, also going to the polling place, hand sanitizer, wipes to wipe down the booths after each person, and all of that.
Okay, good.
And again, we can't, I think we all know, we can't require individuals to wear a mask when they come to our office or the polling place, but we would ask that they would. It will be available. We, I think the county attorney has said that we can't do that in a government office, but I think more importantly, we have gotten from the Secretary of State's office and also the Department of Justice that you can't prevent someone from voting, that could be viewed as voter suppression. So while we strongly encourage and certainly ask anybody to come to our office or the polling place to wear a mask, you know, we can't actually require it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle, did you have a question?
I just want to thank you for, and publicly recognize you for, the job that you've been doing, and you really have a great team with Mr. Caruthers, and it's, this morning on the news, I heard that in New York State, they do not have the... they do not have the returns from their election, which was held two weeks ago. And one of them is a congressional seat or several congressional seats that they are not able to report. So you have, as I've said before publicly, you're the best election commissioner we've ever had. And Scott didn't like my saying that, but anyway. But including me, I mean, you just really have got it down pat. You just really are very open. You really keep in mind that it's the taxpayers and the citizens that are driving your efforts. And I just want to publicly say that again, and I did tell the governor that as well. So you're just doing a great job, and I appreciate it. You just cover all the bases.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have, Danette Smith is now online waiting, although I think we can go ahead and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I'm speaking, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I've got my...
Commissioner Kavanaugh, would you please let me run the meeting? I am trying. I was going to say Commissioner Kavanaugh has requested to speak. After he speaks, I would like to wrap this up and move on to Danette Smith. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. Is it correct to say that today you're asking for four hundred and seventy-two thousand, twenty-six dollars?
Correct, yes, that's the amount.
That's very good.
Yes.
And I'd like to echo what Commissioner Boyle said about you and Mr. Carruthers and your staff doing an excellent job. This spring's primary, I believe, set a record for voter participation, and that's super. I mean, if there's any other sign of a successful election commissioner, it's high voter turnout. And you, Mr. Carruthers, kudos on that. I've said it before, and I'll say it now. Voting is the air supply of our democracy. And you supplied a lot of air this spring, and it looks like you're well-prepared going into the fall. It's extremely important that people recognize that you did this under the COVID pandemic. I mean, under the worst possible circumstances that an election could possibly be held. And so I'm really glad that we have this opportunity to publicly thank you for the super job that you're doing. And we look forward to a November turnout that's even higher. And it looks like you're well on the way to get us there, so thank you. I certainly think that your modest request for funding is more than justified. And if you need anything else, there's really very few things more important to our democracy than what you do. And so, well, at least I am 100% on board in giving you the tools that you need to go forward. So thank you. I particularly want to thank you after the election for getting the precinct voter returns out. And you got them in electronic and analog form. For us Luddites who are still in the analog age, I appreciate you providing those so that we can look at how people actually voted on particular races in particular precincts. It's important to plan elections going forward to have that information. And you did a super job of getting that out. So thanks a lot for all of this, and I'm certainly in favor of everything that you need going forward. And this is a modest proposal, but as far as I'm concerned, yes.
Well, thank you very much. And yes, just real quick to your point, you know, the governor started closing things down on March 17th, around St. Patrick's Day. And in about two days, we went from Plan A to Plan D, and we didn't even have Plan D.
You did a super job, and keep it up, thanks.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments for Mr. Cruz?
I just want to say that, I know it's exacerbating, but I just want to say, I think it's really fun that you've got two Democrats singing your praises. And I know the Republicans feel the same way.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board? I motion to approve four hundred and seventy-two thousand and twenty-six dollars for the CARES Act funding for the election commissioner. Questions or comments to the motion? Then may we please vote?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. At this point, I am, as I had announced at the beginning, going to pause our meeting and turn to, we are very pleased that Danette Smith, the DHHS CEO for Nebraska, has offered to join us this morning to talk about Medicaid expansion. We have some papers here to pass out as well. But with that, Danette, good morning, welcome. Thank you for joining us, and I turn the floor over to you.
Good morning, and thank you so much for having me and giving me an opportunity to talk a little bit about Medicaid expansion. And certainly, this will be a short presentation. But as you are aware, Heritage Health Adult, which is our Medicaid expansion product, we will be taking applications beginning Saturday, August 1st, 2020, with benefits being ready to be distributed October 1st, 2020. And as you may know, I've been here since February of 2019. I've been living and breathing Medicaid expansion. As you may be aware, the voters of Nebraska passed the initiative of 427, which was to ask for the expansion of Medicaid to Nebraskans. And this will be for Nebraskans where their income is at or below 138% of the federal poverty line. And the reason why I'm so excited about talking with you about it is because I want your citizens to know that we are standing available beginning Saturday to start taking applications on the following website, www accessesnebraska NE.gov. We also have available, and you may have some documents with you this morning, where they can call in to a toll-free number of 855-632-7633. So we want them to be ready to do their applications. We estimate that there will be approximately 90,000 Nebraskans who will qualify for the expansion. And we're looking at annual incomes of about, for a single person, approximately seventeen thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. And persons of about a household of four persons around an income level of thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. The newly eligible group are those in the age range from 19 to 64. And this new group will be able to receive just basic benefits, which will include a comprehensive and robust package. And one of the things I would say to your Board of Commissioners is that Nebraska has a very, very wealthy package. It will include physical health, behavioral health, prescription drug coverage, almost comparable to what an employer provider insurance would look like. So as you know, there will be two tiers, there's the basic tier, and there's a prime tier. And for the prime tier, that new group will include 19 to 20-year-olds. If you are pregnant or if you are determined to be medically fragile, you will receive not only the basic package, but that package will also include dental and vision services as well as over-the-counter medication. We have hired additional call centers to help us manage the volume of applications that we get via phone, via the office, and on our website. And we are excited to begin taking those applications August 1st, which is Saturday. We will be in the office working with the benefits starting October 1st. Thank you so much for, Commissioners, for allowing me to talk a little bit about Medicaid expansion.
Thank you so much for sharing with us. There's a lot going on, and it is important for people to be as well-informed as possible. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And hi, Danette, this is Commissioner Mary Ann Borgeson. And I just want to thank you for your leadership on this issue. And as you said, since you've got here, you've lived and breathed Medicaid expansion. And you've done a spectacular job of continuing to push and move this so we can roll it out here. And come Saturday, all your hard work is paying off. So we appreciate your leadership and work on this. And again, thank you for reaching out to do a presentation to our board. We certainly do appreciate it.
Well, I thank you for allowing me to be here with you this morning. I think it is very important that your citizens know that it's finally come and that we stand ready to assist in any way. Those call centers, our offices are going to be available to answer questions. Now, our offices will not be open, but the phone lines and the internet will be. And so we're looking forward to seeing how many applications we get on Saturday.
Well, and we did get the information that was sent with the flyer that you spoke about. So we'll make sure that we can put that on our website as well for another place for them to be able to get the information.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, yeah, we'll post this on our website. Try to get the information as publicly available as possible. Wish you well with a huge project, a huge undertaking here. It should be interesting and exciting to see how it works out for you. Thank you so much for joining us to share this this morning, Danette.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, for having me this morning. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too.
Bye-bye.
Again, these will be posted on the county's website as well to keep these phone numbers out in the public as much as possible. I apologize for the rearranging, and we will now return to the CARES Act update funding and move next to the sheriff's funding request. Good morning, Tom.
Pretty Sheriff. Two weeks ago, we came before you to present the sheriff's request for CARES Act funds. From that meeting, a number of questions came up that we agreed to address, including the level of support from the Health Department. We've had an opportunity to do that, and we're back before you today to present. Joining Sheriff Dunning and I today are Captain Hudson and Sergeant Owens. I'm going to turn it over to them for a brief recap of our presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning, Cap.
Thank you again for letting us address the body today. One question from the board from the previous meeting was if there was going to be an MOU with the supporting agencies. That answer is yes. The sheriff's office would own and be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the Mobile Command Center. The MOU will cover the use of the Mobile Command Center by other agencies. We view the Mobile Command Center as a county-wide asset to be used by all first responders in the county. Sergeant Tim Owens will now give you a very brief overview of the Mobile Command Center. And when he has finished, I'll return to adjust a few more items. You want to see a copy of the MOU now? We don't have the Mobile Command Center yet, so we won't have a MOU in place right now. No, no, I never said we had a MOU filter. Okay.
No, he said with the participating agencies, the first responders.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the idea of the Mobile Command Center came out of our Max Vaccination Planning Meeting, the resources that first responder agencies came to us, and we thought that we would need to look at when responding for future pandemic response. Currently, in the unincorporated areas in Douglas County, we did not have that resource available to first responders. The only resource that we had currently available was a trailer and some limited-use vans. So identified to us was the idea of a Mobile Command Center. And as we talked two weeks ago, that when we did a research, that these units and resources are currently being used across the country for COVID-19 response. These units are being used by local, city, county, state, and even federal assets have been deployed across the country to use. And I demonstrated or displayed a couple photos from across the country of these counties that have mutual resources. A lot of them are city-owned or county-owned vehicles that are shared between different first responders. And just an update for the board is that we were able, on the 17th of July, one of these units that was requested, a Mobile Command Center that was requested for use in the response of COVID-19 hit the streets in Texas. That one was purchased by the city of Kilgore, Texas. And they're responding with their public health as a mobile testing site in their community right now. So that's my update, my review of what we had for you for last...
Thank you.
All right. At a previous meeting, we were asked to speak to Dr. Poor in regards to how the Mobile Command Center will fit within the Douglas County Health Department's overall plan for combating the coronavirus. Dr. Poor and I did have a conversation about the Mobile Command Center and the role that the sheriff's office would play with assisting the Douglas County Health Department. Dr. Poor is in agreement. A Mobile Command Center would enhance our overall collective efforts at combating the coronavirus and any other natural and man-made disaster. The areas that we feel that the Mobile Command Center would greatly enhance the response capabilities of the Douglas County Health Department and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office is with future expanded testing locations and mass vaccination locations. Instead of requiring citizens that live outside the city limits of Omaha and western Douglas County to drive east into the city of Omaha, future expanded testing and mass vaccinations could be done in certain western Douglas County locations, locations such as schools, malls, retirement homes, cities, and neighborhoods. The Douglas County Health Department would be able to perform their critical public health function directly from the field because of the many capabilities within the Mobile Command Center. Just what are those capabilities? They are able to do this because the Mobile Command Center is a self-contained unit that is capable of operating remotely for up to three days without refueling. All functions of the Douglas County Health Department can be done remotely at the scene of any public health emergency. The Mobile Command Center is a state-of-the-art unit with the latest computer system, communication equipment, and information gathering technology. This unit will allow the Douglas County Health Department personnel to stay in constant contact with other local, state, and federal public health officials right from the scene of a public health emergency. The sheriff's office would assist Douglas County Health Department by providing the Mobile Command Center and deputies to any location needed in Douglas County to include locations within the city limits of Omaha. We again, at the sheriff's office, view the Mobile Command Center as a county-wide asset, an asset to be used by first responders for the benefit of all citizens in Douglas County. Cost, we're asking for $1.8 million for the Mobile Command Center, $38,632 for the Moses Board signs, $14,697,000 for the remote camera system. The total will be $1,853,329. With that, I'll address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Captain Hudson.
If I may.
One moment, please, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Boyle.
He can go first.
All right, Commissioner Kraft.
Thanks.
Yes. I have very mixed feelings on this. I have a feeling that this has been on a wish list for a long time because every police force, sheriff's office wants a Mobile Command Unit of some sort. Now, I have to ask, is this the best use of our money? This is over 1%. This is over 1% of the total COVID we've been allocated. And we have to ask, as we're allocating this money, which of these items can we live or do without? Where on the spectrum of absolute needs do these items fall? When I first saw this, let me catch my breath. When I first saw this, I was reminded of the movie Stripes with Bill Murray and John Candy. And it still strikes me as that. The message boards, I can see useful for many different needs, but again, it's been on a long list of wish lists. Now, Sheriff, what is the estimated cost of maintenance and care of this machine over the long term? Can you answer that, please?
I can kind of give you a rough answer. The vehicle's service life is about 20 years. What we've done is we've contacted a couple of different vendors, and with this particular one, we've added in the maintenance costs for the next, I believe, five years in that $1.8 million total.
Okay, but what about after that?
That I don't know. I don't know exactly what the maintenance cost is going to be with this equipment or any other equipment that the Sheriff Department may buy.
Okay, have you asked the City of Omaha how much they spend on maintenance for their command center?
I have not. I've talked to them about their command center, but this unit is totally, it's different than the one the City of Omaha has.
Well, I realize that. I read the specifications, or not the specifications. But what you are planning to include in it, which I know because I was involved in the city council when they purchased their Mobile Command Unit. What is the estimated delivery time should you order this soon?
According to, there's only probably two or three different vendors that can build this type of unit. According to the one that we've been talking to right now, they can guarantee us the unit in our possession by December 31st.
Okay. And as I said, this is over 1% of our total COVID money. I can see where in the communities like Benson, Bennington, and other rural communities, we could put up a tent like we do for the COVID tent testing. They have portable refrigeration units. I could see that this could be done for one-tenth of the cost, if not less, by using tents and other things. I personally, if I were there, could not vote for this today. Now, it's possible I could be convinced, but I just don't see it. As I said, I see it as the unit in the movie Stripes, just as kind of a over-the-top wishlist item that we currently can live without. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Boyle.
Dr. Poor and Tim, would you please come down to the podium? No, you two can sit down. I want Tim, Tim Kelso. Sorry, I didn't know there was a name. You, Dr. Poor and Tim Kelso. Thank you.
I brought Douglas County Health Department.
Will you kind of review the MOU that you discussed with the Sheriff's Office?
I have not seen the MOU yet. The discussion that I had with the captain was really we would use this trailer.
Push the microphone a little bit closer. Thank you.
We would use the trailer to go in neighborhoods in the Douglas County area, outside of the city, or so on. We talked about the use of this vehicle, what we would use it. You know, my questions were specific in regards to is this only for the Douglas County outside the city limit, or could we also use it within the city limit? We have areas, neighborhoods, where we would like to actually, during mass vaccination, go out there so that individuals do not have to come to us, but we go to them, kind of set up a site in their neighborhood. And so, that's what we talked about with the Sheriff's Office. I have not seen an MOU. The one thing I asked him immediately is, and who is going to do the maintenance on this vehicle? And he was assuring to me that would be the Sheriff's Office. The other question that I posed, I said, who would be driving this vehicle? If tomorrow I would need it, could there be? And we talked about that if that vehicle actually would go forward, that there would be some training on the vehicle and what all. He's also asking, what is it needed? Would there be refrigerators needed inside, and so on? So, we talked about those things, but I have not seen an MOU. And I don't think the Sheriff's Office, in fairness, has prepared an MOU.
They haven't prepared one? Did you know of?
I don't think so.
Okay. And you see this as a vehicle where people would go inside to get the vaccination? Or how do you view this?
You know, I would need to see how the setup is. Potentially, if it is good weather, it could be outside. Potentially, I think the way he explained it to me, it could also be inside. So, I would need to have further information on that. But we would use the vehicle. There is no question about it. Do we need it? It would be nice for us to have it. Let's put it that way.
Okay. Is it necessary for you to have it?
It's necessary for us to have a vehicle so that we can go into the neighborhoods.
You realize this is a truck that's 44 feet long. They do have a couple of trailers that they have out there. I just saw them the other day out, parked off to the side.
I do recognize that, yes.
And I don't think the vehicle is intended for people to enter. It looks like there's a big TV screen and a conference table there.
It does look like it's more office space, administrative space, inside of the vehicle, yes.
Yeah, and I don't think it's accessible. I thought I saw steps up to the side of it on the, I don't know that it's accessible. I can ask the.
You know, and we can talk about that.
Pardon me?
And we can talk about that. What would it really be? Would it be a canopy that goes out a little bit, kind of protection from the weather, and people would just come up?
So, they wouldn't be in their cars? They would be walking or?
I don't think it would be a drive-through.
Okay. Last week, they said it would be a drive-through, so that's what I wondered. Did they vaccinate them in the car?
Now, you know, I don't know about that.
Okay, okay, all right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Doctor. Tim, what's your familiarity with this? Have you been involved in this?
No, sir.
Not at all?
I've just been made aware of it, that it was going on.
Okay. And what's, I'm sorry, I should know your title. Are you administrative?
I'm the head of administration and finance.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot, Tim. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that, do you plan on driving this van and this big truck into neighborhoods? Is it in the city or just outside? She talks like the city, and you talk like it's out in the country somewhere.
No, in my presentation, I said we would make this unit available countywide. Anywhere in Douglas County that the Douglas County Health Department will be at, the Sheriff Department and this unit will be there to support them.
You think this is needed inside the city?
Yes.
Based on what?
Based on the fact that we're going to be doing, we're doing testing right now. We may be doing 200 or 300 testing a day. When it comes to mass vaccinations, we're not. I'm saying the county.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, you're talking about vaccinations, and it's not your responsibility to vaccinate people.
That's true. That's why the board asked us to speak to Dr. Poor about, see what our plans would mesh, and that's what we've done. That's why we brought back the support of Dr. Poor in purchasing this Mobile Command Center.
Actually, what happened was you were talking about, somebody was talking about vaccinating people in their cars. And so, I asked if you'd talk to the Health Department, and the answer was no. So, that's why you opened negotiations. So, I guess I kind of spurred you on to come up with an MOU with somebody when you realized you're not qualified to give vaccinations to anybody. And you talked about hiring some nurses. Do you remember that?
Okay, I'm going to call five minutes here on the speaker. Any further questions?
I really, I'll tell you the truth. I guess what I would just say under those conditions is that this is one of the bigger boondoggles that's ever been brought to the county board. And I've tried for years to get along with Sheriff Dunning, and I know we have a kind of a checkered past. We have, both of us have good senses of humor, but this is one of the biggest jokes he's pulled on us, I think. This just can't go. This $1.8 million truck is just not going to work. And I'll close my comments, but I'll have plenty more to say, believe me.
Further comments or questions? From the public or from the board? Okay. We have a motion to reject the request.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to speak in support of this. And the reason is, is because there are many, when you talk mass vaccinations, there are many people that live outside of the city of Omaha that this would benefit, as well, as you said, that it could be used inside the city. When you take on mass vaccinations, it is a horrendous job. And this would add a tool to our first responders for doing that. And I use first responders in terms of not only law enforcement, but our public health officials. Because our public health officials and our nurses and our doctors are the ones who really, truly, during this pandemic, I consider our first responders. And so, this would add, again, a tool to their toolbox in order to provide the services that are much needed or will be needed when a vaccination is available for this COVID-19.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If I may.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. When you have the setup, you can have a logjam of people going there. You're going to have the traffic issues, no matter where it gets put, which is why they want the electronic message boards, that I understand. But we can grant them the electronic message boards, and we can set up these drive-through tents like we're using for the testing. And you can put up 10 of them throughout the rural areas and the parking lots in the city, and do much more for a tremendous, for tremendously mouthless less of money. We don't need to, as Dr. Poor said, this would be nice. But she didn't say it would be a necessity. And for mass vaccinations, it still has its limited capacity because it's one location. It is not multiple locations. It's one location. So, how many vaccinations can it give in a day? Okay, let's assume if we're doing 300 tests at a location in a, what, a six-hour period? Does that sound correct? You'd be able to do 600 tests, and then 100 an hour. I'm sorry, 50 an hour. But you also have the paperwork that goes with it. And you have, as I said, the constraints of time and traffic and location. And the parking. If people are not going to do it in the car, where do they park? I just don't see it as feasible. Again, the movie Stripes, just was the first thing that came to my mind last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Boyle.
I'm sorry to laugh, but movie Stripes is a great movie, and it really does fit your right, Mark. I'd like to know, if I could, could I have the sheriff, would you come up and you tell us about what the staffing is going to have to be, and also the cost of the maintenance for this vehicle? Are you planning on hiring somebody to drive this? Or you have staff that you can?
No, we'll have to have, we'll have to have somebody have a, get a CDL license.
So, you'd hire somebody that has a CDL, then?
No, we'll have somebody in-house.
Okay, so you have someone.
That'll get their CDL license. That's not a problem.
So, you're not going to hire anybody, then?
No.
Okay. And you won't be hiring anybody to maintain it? You'll be putting that out somewhere?
No, we've already consulted with John Solano from the, from the, with John Solano from the County Garage, and he's stated that he would be able to maintain it, along with the maintenance agreement that we'd already have for the first five years.
Okay, and is that, is the maintenance agreement, does it cost anything? Or is it a five-year prepaid?
I think it's built into the cost. Yeah.
So, part of it is the cost of maintaining it?
Correct.
Okay, and I guess I'm puzzled by this MOU that, I mean, I think I'm the one that asked for it, if you have one, and you didn't.
Well, I don't know why we would put an MOU together until we had the thing approved. If it's not approved, why would we go to the problem of?
Well, because you should have it because it's part of the program. I mean, if you're not giving vaccinations.
We can put an MOU together, which would certainly include the county attorney, probably Tim Kelso from Addy's office, and, I mean, those, that's. I don't know why we would put together an agreement before we have a product.
Because you're not giving the vaccinations, Tim.
Well, I never said I was going to give a vaccination.
Well, that's what you were talking about, pulling up.
No, we're not going to do that. The Health Department.
Well, I know you're not, but the Health Department wasn't until I asked you last week because you had no clue.
Well, you'd have to assume that the deputies are not going to give vaccinations.
Yeah, I don't assume anything with you guys, I'll tell you. I'm just saying that it didn't happen until, you know, I brought up who's giving the vaccinations. You said Department of Health or something. Now, I thought, that's news to me. So, anyway, I just think, I think this is really, you know, I really hope that the Commissioners have set aside their, you know, their, this is the most, I'm so skeptical of this. I've tried to go along with all the things, and a lot of things you do, I've supported you in a lot of things, but this is just over the top. This is absolutely, it is a boondoggle. It's a, you see money out there, and everybody's salivating, trying to come in and get something going and have a lot of fun with this truck or something. I just don't see it. The City of Omaha, when I talked to you on the phone, I said, doesn't the City of Omaha have one, or have one? Yeah, they already have theirs.
They have a command post. They do not have a vehicle of this sort.
What's the difference between yours and theirs?
Theirs is a command post. Ours is going to be specifically designed for this type of problem.
Well, you know, it isn't that type of problem. The pictures of it show a big conference table with a great big TV screen at the back of the room. That's not any place to get vaccinations. You have to take all that out to have people walk through there. I'll tell you, this is just really half-baked. I'm really sorry, guys. Come on. I know. I know you really want all the bells and whistles and all the lights going on. This is, please, set it aside. Donate this money to the rental, the people who need rent assistance. We only have $10 million for them. Please, step aside and let us take this $1 million and put it for rent assistance. There are people who are really in trouble in this community, unemployed. We haven't even talked about mortgage, people with mortgages. And Lord knows, there's people out there with that. I've heard from quite a few of them. Please, give this one up, and I know it's going to be hard to do, but please don't pursue it. Really, I plead with you. Don't do that. Don't do this.
I don't get to vote.
Pardon me?
I don't get to vote.
I know you don't.
Okay, so I can't. You say, do this.
I'm just saying, walk away from it.
No, I'm not walking away.
Well, I know you're not, but I'm just asking you. If you had any decency to, please walk away.
Can we please focus the conversation on the vehicle, not on people walking away?
Well, Tim and I are talking. He said he didn't vote, so. Tim and I know each other. We're actually friends, believe it or not. I try, and so does he. We're both Irish devils. Tim's thinking, you are, anyway. I already made a motion.
That died for lack of a second. You made the motion 10 minutes ago. We didn't get a second. I will entertain a motion to approve. I will entertain a motion to approve. I'm running the meeting. I will second the motion. Questions or comments to the motion?
There is no MOU, which we need to have. You're rushing to this. They don't have an MOU to even tell you how it's going to operate. And where's it going to go? Mary Ann, and I agree, she talks about out in the county. That's great. But she talked about in the city. So, where's it going to go, and how do you set it up? How do you set this up at 41st and California? Where do you put it? I mean, you know, these things belong in parking lots, just like the tents do.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I'm just saying, and I think this is a disaster.
Yes, understood.
Chair Duda, if I may, Clerk Asher. Motion to approve, was it $1.8 million? Is that the exact amount, or is there a? Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Most supportive of Sheriff Dunning and his people and what they do, but I really, truly do have a difficult time with this one, and I wanted to state that, and will be voting no on moving ahead with this without more information that there's really a need. I just think we're going to have so many priorities, and I want to be very cautious about how we spend those dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Further questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote.
Motion passes. Commissioners Boyle and Morgan voting no. All other commissioners voting no. voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes, wish you well with that. Next on the agenda, rental assistance update.
Good morning. Melissa Seawick, Director of General Assistance, so this is just an updated PowerPoint. A lot of it is going to be repetitive of what I've been saying over the last few weeks, but we want to use this platform to continue to get the information out to as many people as possible. So I'll go over just the very basics of the program and then give you some updates as we went live yesterday. So again, this rental assistance program was allocated $10 million. We went live yesterday and have been accepting applications for a little over 24 hours. This program is to provide assistance to low and moderate income eligible county residents with unpaid rent due to a COVID-19-related hardship. This program is intended to stabilize housing for the low and moderate income, that is defined as 100% AMI or below, and those at greatest risk due to loss of employment or loss of work hours or wages due to COVID-19. Assistance is not to exceed four months of a household's rental need and/or a maximum benefit of $4,000, whichever comes first. This can include rental fees for late payment as well. General requirements, Douglas County resident, U.S. citizen, or qualified resident alien had a household gross income at or below 100% of the area median income before COVID-19, applicant is listed on the rental/lease agreement, income was negatively impacted due to COVID-19 and inability to pay rent due to COVID-19. This, again, is just the breakdown as far as persons and family, and how much a household can be making pre-COVID, and again, this is gross. Required documentation, photo ID, demonstration of financial hardship before COVID and after COVID, so that can be in the form of pay stubs, unemployment documentation, a letter from your landlord, a copy of the current lease, and we updated that, so that can be provided by either the tenant or the landlord, because we realized that some tenants did not have that, so we wanted to make it as easy as possible. Verification from the landlord stating the amount and months owed, as far as rent goes, a notice of eviction, or notice to vacate if that is available. Completed W-9 from landlord, again, we need that in order to make payment, and then a statement from the landlord stating that they will not evict for non-payment of the months that we are paying. That is just a click of the box that they are testing to that at their portion of the application. This is kind of just the flow of the rental assistance process. The applicant goes and applies. From there, we send an email to the landlord and to the tenant, letting them know we have received the application, the letter to the landlord gives them a document link to the W-9, and also takes them to their portal where they can go ahead and confirm the amounts that it was, rent is owed, what months, and then submit that W-9. From there, the application is going to be reviewed by a Level 1 and Level 2 staff, and then they come to the county, Douglas County General Assistance Administration, where we give the final seal of approval on payment, and we submit it to Oracle, which will go ahead and send that to the clerk's office, where they will do their end as far as getting the W-9 updated. Again, this is all being hosted electronically. So far, we really haven't heard any feedback at all, because we have a lot of sites available throughout the community that are assisting with that. We have some community agencies out in Western Douglas County, too, which is great, we just got them on board. And we are able to translate it into multiple languages using electronic form as well. We have been having Zoom sessions for providers, we had them for the media, I have been taking calls from providers, answering questions, and we've also reached out to different landlord associations and apartment associations as well to get them that information. I've heard back from one of them that they are going to include all of this information in their newsletter, too, so. We've limited barriers as much as we can, the documentation and information we need is to make sure we're in compliance with the CARES money. And applicants and landlords are being notified of their status throughout the application process via email, and then there is a link on the website where they can check their status at any time as well. Here's a few updates as far as the program goes. So we went live with the website on July 17th, since then, we've received over 250 calls that were taken by the help desk. We haven't been tracking the calls that have been coming in directly to myself and Jackie, so those are just via the help desk. And then yesterday alone, we received 157 calls regarding just additional questions, clarification. I received probably 20 to 30 phone calls from landlords and providers, just making sure that they had everything correct, or trying to fix if they submitted something incorrectly. But so far, we've, I think we've had really good feedback from everybody, and we haven't really had any issues at all, which has been amazing. We have received 735 applications within the first 24 hours of going live. Since we've been sitting in this meeting, we have received additional 40. 27% of the landlords have submitted their portion of the application, which I think is amazing, and I think it proves that us having that 10-day gap really helped, because tenants were able to talk to their landlords, we were able to get that information out there, so we're going to be able to act. We are running in to some issues where we're trying to do our best to contact landlords, contact tenants, just the information is not matching up, how much is owed, what months are owed. So instead of just denying that application and having them reapply, we are reaching out to them to get that information, which is holding things up as far as processing. Again, we've just been live since yesterday, and we are really excited, we've been doing, working well with the way a lot of people have been able to apply, and we're anticipating probably 4,000 to 5,000 applications that we'll be looking at. And we've only denied one application, and that was because the landlord called and he messed up and they had reapplied, so there's, it wasn't official, a real denial. So I think that there should be payments for you guys to approve next Tuesday at the board meeting, and we will give an update at that time as far as how many applications we have received, how much money has been used thus far out of the 10 million, and then additional updates as far as what applications we are having coming in, and then any denials, what we're seeing. We've also already updated the application as of this morning, because we were seeing that some folks weren't uploading their income status before COVID and after that proof, and so now we have kind of a hard stop where it says specifically, update or upload your income status, proof of income, pre-COVID, and then update it after, so then we can eliminate having to contact people, because we were seeing that as being an issue. And we will continue to do updates as we see things. This is the website where they can get, anybody can get additional information on the rental assistance program. They can also, it will take them to the link to go ahead and apply for services. All of our frequently asked questions, all of the things that I went over today are there in more detail. The website is www.douglascounty-ne.gov. And then we have the Douglas County CARES Rental Assistance Program Help Desk, and that is Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, and that is 402-444-7232. If you're unable to get through, we have three lines going through on there, just in case you're not able to, or if you have to leave a message, please do so, and we have been able to call everybody back within the hour. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, Melissa. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this, this is great. I mean, we have come a long way in the last four months since the first hearing that we had on this, and I'm glad to see that we've hit the ground running. I just want to confirm that on the first day, I believe you said there were 735 applications?
Yes, the first 24 hours, so from 8:00 to 8:00 today, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., it was 735 applications were received. Some of those were duplicate applications, and that's one of the things that we have updated, that our offices have permission to go through those duplicated applications. A lot of those folks are calling us to let us know ahead of time, but we can easily search for that, so we can weed those out. But yes, 735, and then as of the time I came up here, I just checked, there was additional 40 that have been submitted.
I'm just running some numbers here, and so if the 735 qualified for the maximum 4,000, that's almost $3 million, it's 2.9 million and change. And so when you come back to us on this weekly basis, because we're going to want to monitor this, if you could ballpark for us, you know, not only the number of applications, but the amount that they're going to be qualifying for, so that going forward, we can kind of keep a scorecard on that, that'd be great. It looks like we will certainly have to dedicate additional CARES resources to this, but that's fine, that's what, that's what it's for. And I think that if you, if you did the math on your 4,000 to 5,000 estimated applications, we're far in excess of the $10 million, so, you know, getting a heads up on that as soon as we can from you on a, on a weekly basis would be very helpful for us, because we're probably going to be revisiting this as quickly as possible. And I think you indicated that based on the timeline, that, is it next Tuesday, that the board would be approving the initial payments to landlords of rent assistance?
Yes, as soon as we have an applicant that has all the information, and it's correct, and we're able to confirm everything, we are going to process it, and our goal is to have them done, some of them this week, so we will have them to you guys on Tuesday. And we will provide an update as far as all of the amounts and financials, even if somebody maybe didn't make it to, having a check already sent out on Tuesday, we will have an update as far as anybody that's approved in that, that total amount.
Okay, so in the initial guidelines, we have a $4,000 cap, which people are going to immediately exhaust right now if they claim back to April, which a lot of them probably will. And so we would want to know from you, how many have, in that subset of people that have applied, have reached the $4,000 cap, because that's something that we're going to have to revisit as well, because CARES runs not for four months, but to the end of the year, and so we would probably want to make an adjustment, particularly in light of the fact that a lot of people are going to lose their unemployment insurance coverage in a week, and that's going to further exacerbate the COVID impact on people that are on limited means, and we would want to meet those needs if we possibly can. So if you could break that out for us, that would be real good. Again, thank you and the General Assistance Department and all the people who've worked so hard on this, I'm glad that we're finally up and running, it's been a long struggle, but now that we are, I look forward to the successful delivery of these assistances to the people who have been impacted in our community by the COVID pandemic. So thank you, and keep us posted, this is great. I, I don't know if you're going to address the utilities assistance as well?
I am not.
Okay, because that's the next step, and then we'll probably be revisiting assistance to people for food and healthcare as well, but thanks, this is a great start, and we're excited about going forward, and we look forward to hearing your progress next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Melissa, congratulations, you've done really a terrific job on this, and it's been long delayed, and I really appreciate your, your report, it's very helpful. And I'm going to ask a Class 5 stupid question, okay? I want to be sure, is it completed W-9, is that an IRS form you're referring to from the landlord, I don't understand, W-9? In the required documentation, it says it completed W-9 from landlord. Do you know what that is, Jim?
Yes, right, correct, Dan.
Pardon me, is that IRS?
Dan could probably better.
Dan is kind of quick, yeah, we, well, we need that in order to pay vendors. So some of the folks at General Assistance that I'm working with, they're already vendors, so that's nice, but there's going to be some that aren't, and we'll decide, it's just one of the things we need before we can process a payment.
And who's responsible for getting that, is the tenant?
No, it will be the landlord, and that's part of the portal. And we've received 27% of their W-9 so far, of the people that have completed their applications.
Okay, that's great. And I agree with Jim, I think, you know, the amount of money that we're spending so far just indicates how much more we're going to need, and I would imagine it's going to approach the 30 million that we've been asked for by the, by OTAC.
We've, I've just kind of randomly gone over the applications, and we haven't seen a lot of folks asking for the full amount, which is promising. And that's where we kind of were guesstimating the 5,000 to 6,000 applications that we would be reviewing and most likely approving, because we know that not everybody is going to receive the full amount. We've had one application I saw, their rent was $33, because they had a subsidy, so they were asking for four months of $33. So obviously, we are going to be able to assist a lot more people. We have some folks that have gone over the $1,000 per month, but they only needed two months of assistance. Again, that was just randomly going through applications to kind of see what we were looking at. But yeah, again, we'll definitely report all of that back to you guys, so you have a clear picture of what it looks like in the community.
Well, I'm really glad you're, you're doing this, because you have the experiences, and it just, it really helps a lot to have someone step in who knows that, that background. And I certainly intend to support any other requests that come in for helping people, so you can count on me, so keep it up, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Further questions, Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Melissa. I mean, I said it the other day, Monday, during our meeting while you were on, but less than four weeks putting this program together is pretty phenomenal.
We couldn't have done it without dot com, they've been amazing, so.
Yeah, yeah, good, just great job. And I don't know, I'm trying to look at the folks who are on the call, but if you remember Randy McCoy from the Metro Area Community of Care for the Homeless, you may want to have additional conversations with him, he just provided some information about the program that they're doing. And it's real interesting, because they, this program's been going for about 17 weeks now, and they've, they've, again, monitored who they've served, how many they've served, how many households, how many individuals, and the percentage of funds that were expended for rental assistance was about at 68%, and 20% of those have been for rental that was in arrears. And so there, the average cost is about 1,129, that they're seeing. And so they've dispersed in that amount in this program for those weeks about 1.4 million. And so I think it's important, though, that we stay in close contact with other organizations that have dollars out there, so that we're working together.
Right.
On this, and I know that that also goes, which isn't your part, but kind of your part, on the utilities, because not only are we providing utilities, but I know the state has provided other organizations money for utilities, but we want to make sure that there's a connection between those with rent and utilities and one payment, and then our utility program. And so there's a lot of coordination that I think that should occur on this, and follow who we actually are serving, and how much each individual is getting, I think is worth having that data, especially when we go to look long-term. This, I am all for this program, I am all for the utilities program, I am all for helping individuals, but we haven't talked really about long-term. This is really just a short-term fix for individuals that are in total need right now. But we really, as a community, as a county, need to talk more long-term on how do we get folks on a better path to be able to get out of poverty, but to live on the wages in which they're getting, or none that they're getting, and try to help. So there's a lot of issues that I think we, as a county, not you as Director of General Assistance, but we as a county, need to look at long-term, once we try to get past this, this pandemic and the horrible position that so many of our residents are in. But again, thank you so much for the work that you've done since June 23rd, when we approved this, because it's really phenomenal, you guys are great, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
Melissa, thank you very much. Do you need to have more staff? I mean, there's some real work that goes into the background and... some real work that goes into the background, and trying to be certain, you know, of the landlord, the person requesting the funds, and so on. Are you needing any part-time attempts to get this, so we don't have a backlog with it?
Right now, it's hard to say, because we are processing them. And I was pleased to see that we didn't have 3,000 applications come in yesterday, because that means we can just steadily work on them. And just based on what's coming in today, hopeful, hopefully, we can stay on top of it. And if we are finding ourselves get behind, we will definitely let you guys know. But right now, I think we have between 20 and 25 staff that are working on processing the applications. And then Jackie and myself are both kind of rubber-stamping it on the administration side. And then we have one gal that is in our department that's doing the phones full-time. So right now, we have a handle on it. But we will definitely let you know if any of that changes.
Yeah. If you start to see it, please do come to us. And Joe Lorenz is here, and I want to be sure, Joe, that we're looking at this to give her support for some of the people doing this work that maybe weren't in the budget. I know we have to be careful that whatever was in a budget, we can't reimburse for. But there could be some temps. And I think getting accurate information, as you're doing, is so very important. The other thing I'd tie into what Mary Ann says is, you know, I happen to listen to Bloomberg a lot on Sirius Radio. And when you hear about the unemployment and the longevity of that taking place, this is going to be not some two-month, six-month temporary situation. It's going to be a pretty challenging situation, I think, as we continue to go forward. Let's hope the vaccinations and some other things take place sooner rather than later, but at the same time, carefully. So, thank you, and don't hesitate to come back to us at any point, and keep us updated on how it's going, and maybe some of the rejections that are going, not giving us names or anything, but just telling us how it looks.
Yeah, and we're tracking all of the denials. We have a list of kind of the common denials, so we'll be able to provide that to you. I'm assuming a lot of it, just based on the work that we're doing on that right now, is going to be that we just don't hear back from somebody, or they just don't qualify, because we are reaching out to them to clarify any missing documentation or any questions. So I think that people that will be denied are just truly not eligible for the program.
Okay. Much appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Borges?
Melissa, I forgot to ask you, on the application, do we have a spot? I'm trying to visualize it. Do we have a spot at the end that says "other needs"?
There is not, right now. No. We've gotten some calls, and that I've been, I thought it was great, is that there were some folks that needed their rent paid for like June and July, but they don't know where they're going to pay August, but they would be a candidate for general assistance. So they are applying for this, and then they also have an appointment with us. So when we're getting those calls, we are trying to have them take advantage of both programs, because we can't pay back rent that far. So we're hopeful that we can share that. There's been referrals made to 211, all of that. So we are trying to provide them with as much assistance now, if they are voicing that when they're calling us.
Mr. Chair, do you think that we could ask, and I don't want to put more work on you, Melissa, but could we ask, maybe the 211 is the data that we need as to what the other needs are that folks are asking for? That would be a good community-wide area where people are placing that. And maybe you can just ask them for the list of the top 5, 10 things that people are calling in and wanting?
Okay. I will reach out to them, and I will, as long as I hear back from them, I can present on that tomorrow. Or not tomorrow, next Tuesday.
Thank you. Or Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
Or Monday. Yep.
Very good. Anything else under rental assistance update?
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Good work. Next on the agenda is utilities assistance update. Good morning, Teresa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Teresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. So I'll give you a brief update on the utilities program. We anticipate that we will have an agreement before you next week. The agreement will be between Douglas County and Dollar Energy. Dollar Energy is the nonprofit that will be administering the Douglas County Utilities Program. Attached to that agreement will be a statement of work. So you'll have the agreement, and then the statement of work. The statement of work will describe the program in more detail. We anticipate both being before you next week, on the 4th. We have been actively meeting with Deloitte, Dollar Energy, OPPD, and MUD over the last several days, and we anticipate finalizing that agreement, I think, tomorrow.
Great.
Thank you for the update.
Does anyone have any questions?
Teresa, questions or comments for Teresa? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And I probably would want this from General Assistance as well. I think that we have PowerPoints from both General Assistance, and I see one here from Omaha Public Power District and MUD. Just if we could get those electronically, that would be good. Counselor, if I understand you correctly, we would be in a position to do the final approval and implementation of utilities assistance a week from today. And then it would be up to Dollar Energy to take that and start delivering the actual assistance to the individuals in need, correct?
Yes. I believe you previously approved the $4 million set aside for the Utility Assistance Program. Dollar Energy would be fulfilling the role that GA is fulfilling in the rental assistance program. So much like what GA is doing, they would be vetting the applicants, and looking for all of the requirements that the CARES Act requires, and, you know, making sure it's COVID-related, and that they are delinquent, and things of that nature. And then they will be using that money to go ahead and pay directly the utilities. That money will go directly into the account holder on their behalf, into their account that is overdue.
And that's great. I want to say thank you very much to the Metropolitan Utility District and the Omaha Public Power District for their cooperation and partnership on this. It couldn't have been done without them. And they really stepped up to help meet this need during the COVID pandemic that people had for utilities assistance. So, thanks to them. I don't know if there's anybody from Dollar Energy on the Zoom call, but I'd kind of ask, and I can find them on my own if they're not, that we get regular weekly updates, like we talked about with General Assistance, relative to how many have applied, what's the average, you know, application costing us, so that as we go through the 4 million initially allocated, we have a sense of, you know, the need beyond that. Because I would imagine that, like General Assistance, we're going to get a pretty robust application. People have been waiting months and months since the CARES money got here this spring to get this. And so there's going to be a backlog that immediately will take a lot of resources. And then if we can have a regular weekly update from them as well, that would be a good thing going forward, because we're going to probably have to do some additional resources for utility assistance, like we'll probably have to do additional resources for rent assistance. But thank you for your work on this, and particularly thanks to our friends and partners at OPPD and MUD, and the people at Dollar Energy. Thanks a lot.
I believe they will be joining us at our Monday meeting, and can give us an update at that point as well, as this moves forward. Thank you, Teresa. Further questions or comments on utilities assistance?
Just real quick, Dan Capone, Chief Financial Officer from Dollar Energy Fund here, just to kind of give a couple of updates on our end. I do want to emphasize that we are currently helping customers with utility assistance. We have had an agreement in place to administer the energy assistance program for both OPPP and MUD since May 1st of 2020. So as we anticipate this additional funding coming in, we have been and are currently providing assistance to customers in need in Douglas County. So just to point that fact out. Also, I think we've had discussions on the past about the online application being in both English and in Spanish. And we anticipated that Spanish version would potentially be a few weeks behind the English version. I'm happy to report that. When we're ready to go live with this online application, both the English and the Spanish versions will be available at the same time. So, you know, well past when we spend any CARES funding, we'll continue our partnership with MUD and OPPD through other funding sources to continue to provide utility assistance to the customers in your county.
Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for the folks at General Assistance. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else under utility assistance update for this morning? Again, exciting to see this get up and running. I would ask, is there anything going on nationally, CARES Act, that may be impacting us, that you can see, Commissioner Borges?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, we all know that the HEROES Act was, you know, out there and submitted. There's also a Cassidy Menendez bill that's out there. And yesterday, the Senate, Ms. McConnell introduced the HILLS Act. And so that wouldn't allocate any additional funds to state or local governments. But what some of the provisions are that would impact the existing CARES money, is that, one, they would, the flexibility of the CARES Act money extending past the December 30th deadline, which we've heard quite a bit, that people are a little bit nervous about that short of a timeframe, that it does expand the allowable use of the funds. Two, include revenue loss, but it cannot be 25, more than 25% of these funds towards those revenue shortfalls. It does contain important public health resources that will help counties. It would allocate $16 billion for testing, an additional $25 billion for hospital provider fund, as well as $15 billion for childcare, including a new flexible grant program. So there are also investments in the 2020 census, and the workforce training that counties would be able to utilize as well. In all, Leader McConnell's HILLS Act would provide about a $302 billion expenditure and supplemental appropriations across those specific programs. So, we're watching that. You know, again, there's many counties that are reliant on other revenues, unlike we, on property tax. But there are many who also are reliant on just property taxes. And I think we will see kind of the impact of that in the next year, not necessarily this year. But we are also watching it, because in the HEROES Act, while we're not on a national, as far as the association, we are not necessarily in full support of the HEROES and everything in it. What we are supportive of is the formula in which they use to distribute the dollars, because it's a formula in where all counties, no matter what your size, would benefit from that formula. And so we are continually working, and again, we will work with Senator McConnell on the HILLS Act to talk about that formula for any additional funds that come in and come our way. So, they do, the adjournment date for them is August 7. We are hopeful that there will be something that we can, again, come back and let our counties know. There's been some movement on, but lots of moving parts up there. And I am happy to say that there is a very robust, we're going on a bipartisan, a bipartisan manner, and we're happy to see that. So, we're keeping a watchful eye on all of that.
Thank you for that update. I appreciate it. Next on the agenda, Item B, discussion regarding the importance of wearing masks and operating in safely ventilated spaces. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And we are joined again this week by Dr. Adipur, from the Douglas County Health Department. Thank you, doctor. I'm sorry it's taken us two weeks to get to you, but better late than never. There was an important development on this issue yesterday, where you presented the Douglas County Health Department's Board with an update on where we are. And maybe you could just overview that for us, along with the subsequent action and resolution that was taken there.
So, good morning, Board members. Adipur, Douglas County Health Department. I think what I was able to present to the Board of Health yesterday morning is really just what our data shows in Douglas County in regards to coronavirus, and how we have steadily increased over the last three weeks. Three weeks ago, we were at 521 cases. The week ending 7/11, we were at 558. So that's pretty consistent. The week ending 7/18, we went up to 625. And the end of last week, which ends last Saturday at midnight, we were at 940 cases. So a consistent increase. And from a public health standpoint, and also from a healthcare standpoint, I think we know we only have a few tools that we can work with at this time. We don't have a vaccine. We have some treatment that actually looks a little bit positive. So we need to go with what we are calling non-pharmaceutical interventions. Non-pharmaceutical interventions are washing your hands, wearing a mask, keeping social distancing, stay at home when you are ill. So, what we have seen with Lincoln then putting the mask mandate on the books as of Monday, we had our attorneys look at the authority of the local health director very closely, because we know that potentially from the governor's standpoint, a mandate is not something that he's going to go forward with. So I have to be very honest with you. I would have preferred, our data would have looked different. But I'm not going to do my job if I now take everything into consideration that we need to do in this community to prevent further spread. We are seeing that schools want to be open. We are in Phase 3 now, where businesses are open, and we all are enjoying it being out. And we want to prevent that. We need to close businesses. So when we look at what options do we have available, a mask mandate is actually one of the options. The other data that I just received when I was sitting here waiting is our hospitalization due to COVID are increasing. Our hospitals, individuals, patients with COVID on 7/16, we had 65 patients in our Omaha hospitals, in our regional hospitals. As of today, got the report this morning, we have 89 patients. So, you know, we have 122 deaths reported yesterday. We are reporting two new deaths today. So we are up to 124. Everything we are seeing, we want to keep the economy open. We want to make sure that potentially is a possibility for children to go back to school. So what do we have left? We have left only that really we need to make sure that we have universal masking in our community. I know that is difficult for many of them. Believe me, I've heard about it. But I tell you, masks work. Masks work, and they are a little inconvenience for if we keep this transmission under control. Just today, this morning, actually, a new article came out from five physicians who looked at all the studies that are available, because everybody is saying, you know, do masks really work? What is the science about it? They have looked at 115 different articles, and their comments at the end of it, their summary was, "There is now convincing evidence from multiple controlled experiments that masks work. Masks prevent infected people from spreading the virus to others by trapping the respiratory droplets. Masks are highly safe with only minor and uncommon side effects." And the last sentence is, "Mask could be one of the most powerful and most effective tools to stop COVID-19 and accelerate the economic recovery." At the same time, you can dig deeper into the report and so on. recovery." At the same time, you can dig deeper into the report and so on. But I thought, I looked through it, glanced through it. You know, we are a society that wants to have our economy going. And so I thought it was very interesting that in this article, an analysis made by Goldman Sachs suggests that increasing masking by 25 percentage point from current levels will cut the COVID growth rate by threefold and prevent the need for second round of economic shutdown. So, I really, I want to close in saying there is nearly universal consensus, not consensus by Adi Pour, universal consensus that masks could be one of the most powerful and cost-effective tool to stop COVID-19. So, then what I did yesterday, I provided a resolution to the Board of Health, and you have a copy in front of you. And after all the reason that I just pointed out, the resolution would actually give, the Board of Health would support the Douglas County Health Director to enter into an order for the city of Omaha and regulations for Douglas County outside the city of Omaha that requires individuals above five years of age to wear face coverings while indoors, unless the individual maintains at least six feet of separation at all times for anyone who is not their household members. And then there are certain exceptions that would apply to. This would actually be very similar to what Lincoln Lancaster is doing, because I do think it is important that we have some regional consistency. I just heard this morning too, Sarby County is also looking at this very clearly. What is my authority? And I have Teresa here. We have had lots of discussion with the county attorney. There is under municipal code, Section 1224, there's very specific language in there that says, "The Director of the Health Department has the authority to issue orders, regulation, and instructions when, when the Director feels the city is afflicted or threatened with an epidemic of contagious or infectious diseases. And when such orders, regulations, and instructions would be effective in the prevention, removal, or limiting of such disease." So, that is the authority under, under the city. And then there is some Nebraska state statute that talks about that the Director, the local Director can enact rules and regulations for the protection of public health and the prevention of communicable disease, in our case, outside of a city the size of 400,000. So, that's kind of where we are at this time. The attorneys are drafting as, as we speak. We hopefully can come forward to the community as a whole by the end of this week. We plan that this will go in effect August 3, which will be Monday. Lot of questions from the public, how long will this be in effect? As the Lincoln mandate is, it would be in effect until the end of August, and we'll review it at that time. You know, hopefully we'll see some changes, three to four weeks, some people say six weeks it takes for those changes. But I think we are not, I am not responsive, responsive then to what we are seeing in the community. And that's really what this is all about. I don't think there is any doubt from any medical experts. There are some out there, vitamins and, and holistic medicine and so on. But the mainstream medicine is behind this. I can also talk a little bit about, if you are interested, on the support that I have received on this. I had support, as I mentioned yesterday, in Nebraska Furniture Mart, support from the superintendents, support from the medical industry, but also notes from individuals, North Omaha Churches, the Empowerment Network, Charles Drew Clinic, One World, the Latino Center of the Midland, Metro Omaha Medical Society, who, and the Chamber of Commerce, who all came forward very quickly and said they would support a mandate. So, with that, I'm open to any questions you may have. Commissioner, was that kind of what you were looking for?
Yes, and that's very helpful, Doctor. Thank you very much. And thank you for your courageous leadership on this. It's a necessary public health step. And I'm glad to see that you've stepped up to meet this challenge. And those that deny this, particularly in leadership positions, remind me a little bit of the sheriff in Jaws who kept wanting to open up the beach because it was tourist season, despite the fact that the sharks were eating people. And we're getting the same kind of reaction from people who are intent on opening up society, and we're paying the price with sick and dead people, because they refuse to recognize the science that you just outlined for us. So, moving into a recognition of hard science and how to combat this pandemic is important to the health and welfare of us all. So, thank you for this. This is a good resolution that we look forward to implementing under your leadership in the coming days. And I think that going forward, it would be good to maybe look at the metrics, as I'm sure that Lincoln Lancaster County will be, relative to what effect does it have. And these are measurable things. That's the beauty of hard science. You can actually measure stuff. So, it might be good down the line to hear from you again, relative to what's the impact of this been on the health of our community. But clearly, in the last month, we've had a spike in cases and, and in deaths. And if we can do anything short of a vaccine, which we don't have yet, we should definitely do it to save lives and protect our, ourselves, our family, our community, and our nation. So, thank you very much for your leadership on this and bringing this before us this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pour.
I think there are a couple of our folks from the Sheriff's Department, relative to the mask policy. We've seen this in the setting of this facility and the Hall of Justice, that the sheriffs provide us with security and stuff, and the first responders out on the street as well. And I ask Chief Deputy Wheeler if he could just briefly give us what's the, the sheriff's current policy, which I'm sure will fall in line with what the Health Department's doing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Wheeler, Chief Deputy Sheriff. I just wanted to briefly update you. We had been requiring deputies to wear masks in courtrooms, in other county offices, during prisoner transportations, at corrections and so forth. Last week, the sheriff upgraded that order to require deputies to wear masks in all public spaces. So, the entire complex, we've changed the policy to include that.
And I know that some of our first responders have, have suffered because they're on the front lines relative to testing positive for COVID. What's the sheriff's office experience been on positive cases?
I don't have the complete set of numbers, but I believe we've had four or five people who have contracted. Those are both sworn and non-s sworn, so some of our civilian employees as well. All of them have fully recovered and are doing well.
So, you've been kind of ahead of the curve a little bit relative to what we just heard from Dr. Pour on what's going to become the policy community-wide. You're, you're in compliance with this now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I think we also have the Director of Corrections, which is one of our larger departments. And sadly, we've had, finally, after months of really good management and luck, no COVID outbreak. We've, we've experienced that in the last 48 hours. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioners. Mike Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Regarding masks specifically, we have had all of our staff in masks at all times while they're on duty since April 3. We, probably about three weeks later or so, we got enough of, of cloth masks for our incarcerated population to implement that throughout the facility. Each, each individual receives a clean mask every day. We launder, collect and launder their masks every evening and, and issue them a clean one. And for the most part, we've had very good compliance with our incarcerated population continuing to wear the masks voluntarily. You, we did have our first significant outbreak that we were, reported in a press release yesterday. That was in one of our units that was, it was, you know, we try and create a, a bunch of bubbles, if you will, inside of the jail. They're not impervious. We still have to do the business of the jail. And unfortunately, you know, one of the vulnerabilities that we could not avoid and continue to operate finally worked against us. And we did have an outbreak in one housing unit.
So, if I understand you correctly, the staff has been required to wear masks on the job for some time?
Since April 3.
April 3. And so there'll be no change there relative to this new Health Department order. But the inmate population, which will be, under this Health Department order, will be required to wear masks going forward?
We will do everything we can, short of using physical force, to put a mask on, on individuals.
I appreciate it.
Continued with education encouragement campaigns within the jail.
Good. And, and this outbreak that we've had, it's rather significant. I think the last number I saw was there were 36 new cases of COVID positive cases?
Correct. Do, because of, when we knew that we had a potential exposure to, to a contracted staff member who was positive last week, who worked with individuals living in one particular housing unit, we went ahead and tested everyone in that housing unit, and there were 36 positive cases. We've isolated everyone, that housing, that, that housing unit has been isolated since we were alerted to the first concern. It'll continue to be isolated until we've, until there, you know, such, sufficient amount of time has passed and they're medically cleared.
And I imagine that, you know, PPEs and masks and sanitizers?
Absolutely. Yes, we have, we have created, you know, we've moved the individuals who need to be moved from that housing unit into our COVID quarantine unit. We don't have as, as many beds as we need to, to house everybody in that, in that COVID quarantine unit. So, some people are remaining. We outfitted all of our staff who work in that area with full PPE and have changed all of the procedures regarding meals delivery, mail delivery, you know, any, anything that requires a staff member to enter in the housing unit. We have altered in an attempt to contain the outbreak to where it is.
Well, thanks. It's a tough situation. I know that you're dealing with it, but we wish you the best.
Thank you.
If there's anything you need, any resources, please let us know.
I will. Well, approving our request today will go a long way. Since I have the, the forum, I do want to clarify that, because I've gotten a lot of questions about the individuals who were arrested as a result of protests this weekend and the connection to this outbreak. They, they physically could not be farther apart in, from, within the jail, from where our admissions area is to where this housing unit is, that they are hundreds of feet apart. So, I don't anticipate that there was any risk to the individuals, the protesters who were arrested this weekend, from our current outbreak.
Well, thank you. That was a concern, because I guess there was kind of a computer breakdown in releasing a lot of those people. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I'd like to move on to other speakers.
I'm sure you would.
We give you 10 minutes. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just note, there was a statement made when it was asked that the, the possible order that's going to come, the order that's going to come eventually with the mask piece, that it would automatically make people in the jail have to wear them. That, I'd like to note, that's not exactly guaranteed. There's some exemptions that are in there. So, the policy that we already have down for people wearing masks will obviously stay, have to stay in place, because there's some, there's some exemptions that are being crafted out. Just wanted to clear that up. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We will move next. Thank you for that discussion. We will move next to the public hearings that we are continuing. The first is a zoning text amendment to all portions of the county's zoning regulations, coming from Environmental Services. We have had a public hearing on this on June 30 and July 14. And we are continuing that public hearing now. Is either Doug Cook or Kent Holm available to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. This is Doug.
Okay, thank you, Doug. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to ask any questions or offer up any comments regarding this? All right. Then I will close the public hearing. We have a motion by Commissioner Borgerson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers, to approve Item A. If there are no more questions or comments, could we please vote?
Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent.
Thank you. Item B, comprehensive plan amendments related to stormwater. Stormwater-related comprehensive plan amendments, request by Environmental Services, again Doug Cook. Again, this is a public hearing that has been going on June 30 and July 14, and we continue it today. Would anybody from the public like to offer up any opinions or questions regarding these amendments? If not, I will close the public hearing. We have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers, to approve the comprehensive plan amendments in Item B. May we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. You aren't really standing in front of a lake, are you, Kent? It just looks good. Good to be talking about stormwater with that. Item C, we will continue the public hearing about adoption of revisions to the stormwater management regulation. Again, this public hearing was conducted on the same dates and is continued today. And, and I would again ask, is there anybody from the public that would like to offer any opinions or questions or comments regarding these stormwater management regulations? If not, I will close the public hearing. I have a motion by Commissioner Boyle. I will second that, to approve the adoption of revisions. If there are no questions or comments, could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Kent. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we move to committee discussions, budget reports. Commissioners Morgan or Boyle, anything to?
See, we met this morning briefly to talk about timetable and so forth. And we're going to be dealing with, talking with Joe in the very near future about putting together some information about the budgets. But Joe made some good comments about, and so did PJ for that matter, about the taxes coming in pretty soon. So, we're going to keep an eyeball on that and then report to you what's happening.
All right. Thank you. Under the Community Services Committee, we do have discussion, possible action on the 2020, 2021 Visitor Improvement Fund allocation recommendations submitted by the Visitor Promotion Council. Okay, I hear a motion to approve and a, and a second. Catherine or, there you are. You're hiding. You're hoping I wouldn't call you down. Can you just briefly give us kind of the highlights of what's changed this year, what's different this year versus normal?
Sure. I'm glad to speak to that. And I also was just mentioning that the VPC Chair, Emiliano Lard, is here and could speak as well to it. So...
I only know his voice, not his face. That's why I didn't...
So, I'll just give you the brief background, and then I'll let Emiliano fill in any more context, but...
Fine. Emiliano, I apologize. I...
You can go ahead and show the process.
Fine.
Well, this year, of course, the, a main variable this year was that the fund is down significantly. Our visitor attractions are, obviously because of the pandemic, we're having fewer visitor standard hotels and motels. And the revenue that drives this grant award is down. So, it was challenging for the Visitor Promotion Council to work in that context. The group met, they had three meetings, let's see, I believe in June, and all were done both onsite and available via Zoom. So, there was some participation remotely. And there was a lot of public participation in those meetings as well. Let Emiliano speak to that as well. Emiliano will speak to that as well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Waiting so patiently for us.
Thank you. My name is Emiliano Larda, and I'm the Chair of the Visitor Promotion Council. This is my first year as the Chair and the fourth year that I serve on, on the Council. And this was a particularly difficult year. We had 38% less funding available than we did the year before. So last year, we were able to allocate $4.3 million and this year was 2.6, a little more than 2.6 million. So we had to make very difficult decisions. And the Council decided early on in the process to prioritize the smaller organizations, ethnic and diversity category, because we thought that there were greater danger of ceasing to exist if funding was cut considerably. And that's, you know, a difficult decision that we had to, had to make. The funding for those organizations was maintained at a level, at the same level of funding that they received the year before. And then most of the other organizations received a cut compared to the year before of about 38%. And larger organizations receiving more than $75,000 received a slightly higher cut. Now, these are extremely important cultural and civic assets to the community. So please understand that the decisions have really no bearing on, on the merits of their work and their programs. But really, it was a, you know, how do we allocate 2.6 million when we had to so many requests, about 70 requests and about $7 million in requests? So it was a very difficult discussion, very difficult decision. This is my first year as the Chair, so I do, I do ask and mean it when I say that I do want feedback because I do believe our process should continue to improve. So we have started making a few changes in the last few years. But I solicited participants and Commissioners alike to share with me any feedback they have so that we continue to improve the process by which we arrive at a recommendation that we put before you. Okay?
Thank you so much, Emiliano.
Are there any questions?
I just have a quick one.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And thank you for your service in a really tough time. I don't envy you this, this job. But I think you did the best you could under very arduous circumstances. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
The, one application on here which appears to have come in late was the Douglas County Historical Society, and they do great work. I think they just got their paperwork in late. So in dealing with that, I think they requested 34,000. Is it the, this board's discretion to, to do something about that? Your, your, your committee was not empowered to do anything about that.
Right. And to be consistent with previous years, when there's an untimely submission, we deny funding. But certainly that's something that the Commission, Commissioners can, can choose to go in a different route. So that's outside of our purview.
Sure. And I noted in here a variety of these activities, which I don't know if they'll actually be taking place this year. You know, many, many, many things have been just delayed, canceled, whatever. And yet, there seems to be funding. And I just picked one kind of, well, a couple. We have the farmer's market, which I believe is open and running. I haven't been in attendance, but they, they did receive funding. And then, for instance, and this is not a meritorious observation, I'm just picking one. The Omaha Summer Arts Festival did receive funding. Is that gonna actually occur, the arts festival?
I don't know. And Catherine has been in communication with the applicants to know there's a deadline by when they have to have the event. If not, monies that have not been used have to be returned. So Catherine. And by the way, I'd like to say a big thank you to Catherine and to Kristian Lynch and Karen for all their support during the entire process.
Just to clarify, that's something we've been tracking as well. For last year's award recipients, after a conversation with Joe, we held the third and fourth quarter payments pending confirmation from recipients that their event had taken place as scheduled. So we've been having a lot of one-on-one interactions with those, those last year's recipients. And so if the event didn't take place as scheduled, we're reimbursing for funds that could have, you know, would have been incurred in good faith, planning for the event, but not after that date. So we're working with recipients one-on-one on that. And I believe the Visitor Promotion Council made the recommendations generally based on what we knew at the time for upcoming events and activities. But one, and I neglected to mention this in my introduction, we have included in the proposed application, or award agreement this year, an interim report, which isn't typical, but we've introduced one this year as sort of a built-in check-in at the midpoint in the award season for any applicants and recipients to give us an update on how their project is going and monitor funds as they're being spent. And so we have an opportunity to, the board could look to reallocate or otherwise take action depending on that information in the mid-season.
No. So for instance, the, the Summer Arts Festival, you know, that would occur kind of like right now normally. And it's not, is that correct, for 2020?
Their, their event that was funded in the last cycle took place, but it took place virtually. And so in conversation, we consulted with the county attorney's office and discussed the eligibility of that. And it was determined that a virtual event wouldn't meet eligibility criteria. So the Omaha Summer Arts Festival did return their funding for the last award.
So would we have, as a result of those kind of, you know, occurrences, a carry-forward balance that would be from unexpended grant cycle, this grant cycles, just past grant cycles of funding?
I'll defer to Joe and our, the finance team, but I believe that any returned funds were taken into consideration when they provided a balance to us for the group in making award recommendations.
Okay, Joe, I, does that mean that the carry-forward balance was considered as part of the 2.6 million? Or is there a balance unexpended?
What we did is look at all the funding, and so there was some events, but not as much as you would think that where, where the money was returned. So we took that into account. And then we also had to estimate what the receipts were coming out of the hotel tax. And it was actually a fairly dramatic drop in, in the hotel tax where I think it was at about 35 to 40% of its previous levels. So then we had to kind of project that going out, making some assumptions, when is it coming back? And we were, we were pretty conservative. So we took that assumption and then, but it had been pretty robust receipts before the pandemic struck. So we took all that money into account and made the estimate that we would probably, to keep it as an ongoing basis, fund it at, you know, the, reduce it by about a third or 35%. And then that's the number I provided Catherine that they would be have eligible to allocate.
So I guess what I'm getting at, Joe, is these event-related unexpended funds, you know, they're just, they're not able to do it.
Yeah, there weren't as, it wasn't as much as you would think. They, because even though they did, sometimes if they didn't have an actual event, they still incurred some cost to, that even, even though they didn't have it, they, they incurred cost and planning and things like that which were eligible. So I can't remember right off the top of my head. I don't know if Catherine knows. But the amount of returned funds wasn't as material as, as you would think it would be.
I see. You know, what I'm looking for is there possibly be some resources for the very modest $30,000 Douglas County Historical Society grant from this pool of funds. Either from this unexpended year, or there's gonna be, this isn't gonna end tomorrow. So there's gonna be funds that are granted here on projects that will not be able to be held going forward. So that's what I'm saying, is that, is it.
Yeah, and I think we're all, we look at every request individually. And if a good justification can be made for it, we, we try and work with them.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgson. Okay, Commissioner Rogers.
Mike, okay. Now, I'd just like to follow up on the comment inquired about the Douglas County Historical Society. There has been precedence in the past. I mean, I think this is the first time that they've been laid in this manner. And in the past, we have shown grace. So there's a process for that. And I definitely, them being in the district, would make contact with them and see if we can exercise that option the same way we have in the past, being that this is the first time they've done it. So I'll definitely plan to follow up with them around September.
Yeah. But I think we can work with them.
Not only is it the first time that it's happened to them, they called within a matter of hours of the deadline. Just when they realized what had happened between the pandemic and some turnover in staff. So they knew immediately what had happened and contacted us to plead their.
And if I may comment?
Sure. Commissioner Craft.
Catherine, could you come up? Did I wait till she got to the back of the room?
Pretty much.
Okay. We do have a vacancy coming up on the board, do we not?
That's correct. Susan Oakes, her term ended, and so there's an opening.
And I just wanted to get that out there so we could get some applicants in.
Was that one of the hotelier positions?
No.
Okay, just an at-large, general position?
Correct.
Thank you.
At-large. And would you tell the public what is, how do they apply if they wish to apply?
The application is available on the Douglas County Board's website. There's a link for appointed boards and commissions, and the application's available there. And I believe the instructions are on the application, but they can submit them to the county administrative offices. And Karen would receive that and share it with the board.
Thank you. And Emiliano, you don't have to get up. I just want to congratulate you. During these tough times, you and the committee have done a fantastic job. You know, I don't intervene with the committee, even though it's under my purview because it's not appropriate for me to try to guide where you go. So I really want to thank you. I think you've got a very excellent array of board members. And you did a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Craft. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I, I kind of consider, correct me if I'm wrong, but I consider the Douglas County Historical Library, whatever its official name is, really is the official record keeper of the county, isn't it?
Yes, they are. It's not just a feeling. They are the official archivist of the county.
And I knew your family was very much involved and contributed a lot to their success. And I was really, you know, if someone, you know, if we could get this rolling sometime, I don't, hope we don't have to wait or keep them in suspense to figure out some way to accept their application, particularly under the circumstance. I certainly would be very, very much in favor of that.
Commissioner Rogers.
If we cannot, I would ask personally, just because the board has honored the fact that they were late and we haven't done the, the piece on the floor. So I think what we've traditionally tried to do is just wait a couple of months, let the cycle out, and then make that ask. And, and like, like we said for their first time, we've done it. So.
Sounds good to me.
I'll, you know, I'll, I'll take ownership of definitely working through that.
I'll wait for you then. Thanks.
And I'm good with that, but I don't think we need to wait a few months. I think we could come back in a few weeks.
Okay.
So I, I sense good support on the board for that.
I'll have an amendment about the sheriff's truck. No, no, and I won't.
Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll be interested in the midterm report because, to see where we are with the collections and hotel motel tax. And then I just wanted to, I will have a further conversation with you. I haven't gotten back to you about one that was denied. And we can have further conversation about that one. So thank you.
Thank you. We have not voted yet on this, have we?
Correct. There is a motion and a second, but.
Any further comments before we vote?
I can make one, real quick. I kind of miss the, the days of, and some of you will remember this, about the come on down, let's deal, when we had Commissioners walk out. It's okay to be real sterile like this, but it's kind of, you know, when you, like, Mr. Borgson, I think she asked, wants to add one. You know, you need to have some discretion in here. And I think it's just, you know, I'd be interested to, I think it makes sense.
We used to, the VPC used to recommend about 90% of what they expected to allocate and leave a little bit for us. And I always said, if we're aware of needs that you're not, it gives us a chance to address them. And I thought it worked out, but I think you and I were about the only ones that liked that, let's make a deal system.
I remember I yelled, come on down, and that's when they walked out.
Yeah, the good old days. All right. So we, we just approved it?
Uh, no, sorry. I was.
Okay, then may we please vote on the VPC, the Visitor Improvement Fund, excuse me.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Emiliano, for, interesting year to step into your new position. But I had an opportunity for a lengthy conversation with you. I applaud how you jumped in with both feet and, and took on a difficult situation. You, you and your board. Thank you for what you've done. Since you don't get paid, all we do is say thank you. Okay, weekly personnel report from civil service, anything there that we need to be aware of? I'm not aware of anything. Legislative issues.
Working, and we are currently monitoring, and we will probably have a better update next week. But they got a little sidetracked here the last couple of days from the actual bill work. So we'll, we'll bring a report back next week.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
The Commissioners, if they have any interest in, and I brought this up with PJ and Joe this morning, but whether there's any interest in not filling positions other than the 24/7 operations. Just when someone retires, don't fill it and try to ask people to kind of get along on it because we don't know where we're really headed quite yet. So kind of think about that. I'll, I'll bring that up at another meeting. But kind of think about whether or not you, how you feel about that and take a look at what, where we have vacancies in the non-24/7 operations. Thanks.
Thank you. We do have need for executive session for negotiations and litigation. All right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle to, to recess and to executive session for purposes of discussing, discussing negotiations and litigation. An executive session is going to be up in room 903. Okay, we have motion and a second. Questions or comments? Could we please vote? I, I would hope, you know, more than a five-minute restroom break. I, I'm ready to keep moving. Now, when we are done and reconvene and adjourn, we'll do that back down here. So I, I believe, won't we? Don't we? Can we do it up there? If Dan comes up, he.
Well, motion passes six to zero. I have no problem going upstairs in 903 and adjourning there.
As usual, I will announce the only action this board's gonna take today is, after executive session, reconvene and adjourn. There will be no more further public action taken. But the reconvene and adjourn is going to occur up in 903 at the conclusion of our executive session. Thank you all.
Do you need this left one thing to record it? I am going to. I just got to finish up a few things here. City Council not meeting today? Yeah.